Okay, we'll go ahead and open the meeting at 6:03 with the pledge to allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome. This is Rutland Town School Board regular meeting. It will be followed by our pre-town meeting. Uh, one second. I brought the pen in so they could sign it. I didn't leave it. I thought we'd have more people on the meeting. Seeing how they don't have to go out in the one below zero weather. Okay, first on is our agenda. All need to have a motion. Anybody got any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? And I want to let it be known that it shows quite a few articles. It's going to depend on how tied up the select board, how long they go with their pre-town. So we may be halfway through and we're gonna have to cancel our regular meeting to move to pre-town. Okay, and depending on the time, we can choose to come back if we'd like. So saying that, is there any additions, deletions, changes?
I just, I wanted to put into just a quick discussion about having a parent-community listening session.
Okay, you can bring that right into new discussion. Yep, new business. Anything else? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda as printed? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it'll be unanimous. And I apologize for my voice. I'm still getting over a cold. It's not COVID, it is a cold. At least according to my three tests. We'll go on with teacher, staff, community questions. Anyone have any questions? Okay, not seeing any. New business, Tina?
I had just been thinking that there hasn't been a whole lot of dialogue either between the school and parents or from the board and parents. I was thinking it might be nice to have like just a listening session. I know in the past they've done things like coffee hours. Right this month, I'm not recommending that we do anything just because the numbers are so high, but to try to maybe put something on the calendar for February or something along that line. And I also was wondering what Sarah thought about that and if that was something that the principals would want to be a part of to hear about how the community and families are feeling about what's going on with the school and if they had any suggestions or ideas for going forward.
I totally would be on board with that. And I definitely think before our February break, instead of trying to do it right after, like given hopefully we're in a good place where we can do that. I think following a break might be a little dicey. People travel.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea that we get the community's feedback.
Well, we'll try to get it in before pre-town, which, or before town meeting, which is February 28th. Okay, and then if people have any questions, we can answer it over there too. But like I said, I believe it's gonna have to be virtual, which is I don't think any problem by any of us. Sarah, are you okay with that idea?
I love it. Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Chris, welcome. Eric, I mean.
What evening would be best? If we're doing it virtual, then I guess it wouldn't matter if we did it in January either. Would Monday, like the last Monday of January, the 31st work?
We'll have to wait until Chris is here because he's, I don't know the other, all the other meetings.
Does he have to be there?
No, but he may want to. So, and if there's a question on anything.
So maybe put that to the end when he's here to ask him or?
We can't, we can't hold off for that for now. Yeah, I'm not sure whose meetings or when. January is really tough because of pre-town about all the budgets because they still haven't all been approved yet or set. They have, I think, until the 24th. Is the very last day, but I think most towns have to have their paperwork in by the 16th.
So, and the 24th is the fourth Monday. So, and that's usually our second reserved spot, right?
Yes, yep, the second and the fourth. So we could shoot for the fourth.
The 24th?
And so it should be clear on Chris's calendar, but we'll just double check with him.
Would that work for you and Eric, Sarah?
Sure. Eric, this, Tina was recommending like a parent forum, just like informational, like just a listening discussion for how things are going, any feedback. And I said I 100% being supportive of that. So you're looking at the calendar for Monday, the 31st?
Right.
Um, no, Monday, the 24th, the fourth Monday.
Oh, I apologize.
It's okay. It's just we know Chris. Would 6 o'clock be a good time or 6:30? What would be?
It will be virtual, Eric.
Yeah, it will be virtual. So what would be a good time for everyone?
6.
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my calendar real quickly here.
Okay.
I'm just wondering, Tina, like the format of this, like are there guiding questions? Is it just like Q and A? Is it more about the budget? Is it more about COVID?
It could be about anything, I think.
Just a listening session.
Question is, the answer is.
Yeah.
Yep. Because we haven't met with them so long. I mean, we used to do the formal ones in the cafeteria, but it won't be like that because that has to kind of be, has to be in person. But virtual is just questions and answers. They can ask about COVID, they can ask about the school, they can ask about the budget.
And if we don't have the answer, we could try to get back to them by the next meeting.
Right.
Sounds good to me. And just if there's three, then it would be a quorum, correct, Lynette? So we'd have to warn it if there are three or more board members.
We would, we would warn it anyways because
You would, okay.
Yep, I'd warn it anyways because, we won't be taking any action and I'll make that clear, but because there are more than, there are three or more there, it is, would have to be a warned meeting. So 6 o'clock?
I think that's great. I, yeah, I think it's a great idea, Tina.
Okay, so we'll put it down for 6 o'clock on the 24th?
Sarah, would you be able to put that in the newsletter for this week and next week just to make sure people know about it?
Sure. Do you want to write a little something about it just so it's a little bit more clear?
Sure, I'll get it to Pam by Wednesday.
Perfect. And then we'll run it this week and next week. I love it.
Okay, thanks.
We'll post it on Facebook and do all that too.
Okay, any other new business to be brought up before the board? Okay, finance discussion is next. We really do need to get to the budget so that we can get our draft warning done for our next meeting. I handed out drafts of our warning to all. And according to Louis, Louis, the amount that's in here is the amount that we would be voting on, correct? Where am I?
Correct. That's based on the budget that you have in front of you.
Okay, the draft you guys have in your hand is wrong. I haven't updated it. This is, this is, the new one is at home. So just, just kind of cross out the written amount.
I didn't get that one yet.
That you didn't give it? No, I didn't want you to have it. Just cross out the written amount because it says 8 million and it's not. The one in parentheses is the correct amount. And I believe the other, did I, you've got a copy of this, Louis, right? No?
The, the warning?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure that
I'm sure I have a copy on my computer somewhere.
Oh, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure, like I said, we'll change the written amount, but
And then also the two years.
The next one is, yeah, we'll do that. The next one is on the Ed spending. 17116?
Yep.
Okay. And then equalized pupil, 2.51?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Then on two, we'll change that. The A should be a two-year. And we'll change that. Um, three is just the warning for upstairs for 200,000. And this one isn't all capitalized, so. And that meeting. Okay, so tonight we'll all sign this before we leave. Revised one, right. And then I can take and hand it in tomorrow so that they can get it ready for the printers.
And then will Russ have to stop by and sign it himself?
Yep, yep, if he wants to. So what we're gonna do is go right into finance reports, Louis.
Okay.
Hey Lynette, quick question, but I just go to the town hall, is that where I would go sign it?
Yes, yep, and hopefully Yeah, tomorrow's Wednesday, so if you just stop in whenever, it should be
On what, sometime tomorrow?
Yeah, that would be fine. I just have to make sure that I have it rewritten the correct way. We'd have to do that tonight.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So I have two things to discuss tonight, the budget and then there's the financial reports. So there's the, in the packet, there was just a system-generated financial reports, but I also provided, it came in the email today, a forecast.
Right.
So this is the current year budget forecast. I look at what we have budgeted versus what our expenses are to date and what I anticipate they will be at year-end. So as you know, we set our budget anywhere between six to 18 months in advance, depending on the point in year we're looking at. So many things could change between, between that time period, from staffing to tuition amounts. So currently I am anticipating that we are running a small deficit of $45,000 based on the size of our budget that is pretty small. And I think we can easily make that up and go back in the black. It does make many assumptions on the budget. It takes into account what our current staffing is, our staffing costs, as well as an estimate of our secondary tuition students.
Okay.
All other lines, unless we've overspent our budget, they are anticipated at the budget amount. So for example, if we have a $10,000 supply line and we've only spent 1,000, I have that anticipated amount at 10,000 still, which is the budget amount. So we do have many lines that we can look at to pull amounts from and freeze either partial amounts or whole amounts of those budget lines to make up the deficit amount. So my recommendation is that I'll just work with Sarah over the course of the next few weeks to look at our budget and see which lines we can pull from to make sure that we end in the black.
Okay, just for the public, just so you know that it looks like the fund balance with the deficit would be under 46,000. And when you're talking about an eight-plus-million-dollar budget, that's really close, really close. So anybody have any questions for Louis on the forecast? Okay.
So moving on to budget, so we're looking at the third draft tonight. So if you recall, last month, when we looked at the second draft, there were some major changes. We had some revised estimates on secondary tuition, which decreased our budget by approximately 167,000, as well as there were some revisions and cuts that Sarah and the administration made at the school. And then there was that extra position that was in there in error which came out. So it had some large impacts to the budget in the right direction. They decreased the budget. At that meeting, there were some additional discussions and three changes that were made to the, to the second draft, which are reflected in the third draft. The first one is we added a 1F to each kindergarten para position. That position is in there for the full year next year. It was also decided by the board that they, that the school could start looking for that, to hire that position early this year. That position is also included in the forecast that we just talked about resulting in the deficit. So, so that position is already included. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. The other two changes, which were a lot smaller, we added 10,000 to the maintenance budget to, for strapping for the second floor. That was just wood strapping on the ceiling to keep all the insulation in place and prepare the ceiling for another ceiling, or prepare it for a real finished ceiling. And then we also removed $5,000 from the food service line and that reflected making the change to eliminate the free second meal starting this past January, this January that we're in.
Okay.
So those two change, or those three changes are now reflected in the totals. Before we get to those totals, there's one thing that's still pending and that's the vocational tuition. I am basing this on an estimate that we received from the Stafford, Stafford Technical Center. The piece that we're waiting on is the six semester rolling average. We can't finalize that tuition amount until we have that. The state did send out a preliminary amount, but said that they, there was a revision coming. So right now, I'm not using the state's numbers. I am using Stafford's numbers, which I think are going to be more accurate. The changes that do occur should not be significant, if any. Once I do have those numbers, if we set a budget tonight, any change that is necessary, I do need to make the Stafford numbers match whatever were given by the state. So I'll just figure out whatever that difference is and say it's $1,000. I'll find $1,000 and I can work with Sarah to figure out whatever that difference is. I'll pull it from a different line and put it to those Stafford vocational tuition lines.
Okay.
But like I said, I do not anticipate those being significant and should have a very minimal impact to the budget. So looking at page six, we can look at the totals. Total expense is up by 416,000, 4.84%. But due to the surplus that we had from the prior year, we are looking at education spending only being up 290,000, which is 3.46%. On the next page, we can look at the tax rate calculation. We did preliminarily look at this last month, but since then, we do have one of the pieces that was still pending at the time. So total expense, 9,28,426, up 4.84%. Education spending, 8,675,543, up 3.46%. Those numbers do match what you saw on page six. The next piece of the calculation is looking at equalized pupils. Equalized pupils is a two-year average of ADM and it's weighted based on several different factors. That number does come from the state. Final equalized pupils is supposed to be out December 15th, but at this, they haven't met that deadline in a few years. So right now, we're still looking at preliminary numbers. Based on those preliminary numbers, we're looking at equalized pupils at 506.87, an increase of just under 1%. We take our education spending divided by our equalized pupils to get our Ed spending per equalized pupil of 17,116. That's an increase of 2.51% over last year. That 17,000 you could also find on the warning. And that 2.51% is also on the warning under Article, Article 1. The next step in the calculation is to take our spending per pupil and divide it by the property yield. We talked a little bit about the yield in the last month. So the tax commissioner came out with a recommendation of 13,846, which was a significant increase in the property yield. And that was based on a number of factors, but one of the big factors being that the Ed Fund is now sitting with a surplus of approximately 90 million dollars. After the tax commissioner's letters came out, we were given further guidance from the head of finance at the AOE, who stated that he doesn't believe that the legislators will use that full surplus to lower taxes and that he felt the more conservative approach would be to use a yield of 12,937, which is still a 14% increase over last year's yield. As the yield increases, local tax rates go down. So we want to see an increase in the yield. The property yield, although we were given recommendations from the tax commissioner and the AOE, we won't know what the actual yield is until the legislators approve it. And that's typically not until after town meeting, sometimes April or May. So at this point, we are looking at an estimate and we will not have a better estimate probably until after town meeting. So using that yield, the more conservative yield, we'd be looking at an equalized tax rate of $1.32, which is a 10% decrease over last year. So that yield does have a large impact. Even though our budget is up by 3.46%, we're still seeing a decrease in the equalized tax rate. The last piece of the calculation is to apply the CLA. CLA is the Common Level of Appraisal. It compares the fair market value to the assessed value of your home. The assessed value, of course, is what the value of your town places on your home. And then the fair market value is what your home is worth if you try to sell it. So CLA for last year was 100.02. When CLA is at 100, that means the fair market value and the assessed value are equal. As the fair market value of your home increases above the assessed value, the CLA decreases. So right now, we're looking at a CLA of 96.38. This is an average, this is a number that comes from the state. It looks at a three-year average of home prices compared to assessed values. It does, there is a calculation. It looks at anomaly sales that need to be thrown out because they don't fairly represent a fair sale. So based on that number of 96.38, it's saying the fair market value of Rutland Town homes is greater than the assessed value by approximately almost 4%. After the CLA is applied, we're looking at an adjusted tax rate of $1.37, which is approximately a 7% decrease in taxes over last year or under last year. I will stress these are estimates. I mean, anything in red, which is this equalized pupils and the property yield, can change. I don't see a significant change in the equalized pupils coming. But property yield, it's really anybody's guess. Until the legislators really start to meet and start discussing how they want to spend that surplus or what other factors may be happening at the state level, we really don't know.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Louis?
So if there is no questions or comments or concerns, we would be looking for an approval of the budget amount of 9,28,425.59.
Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Any discussion? Russ, you got anything?
I do not.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, no opposed. It's unanimous. Louis, I hate to ask you. Is there any way you could print up a warning for us?
I can, yeah.
Now, looking at the warning
I have this.
Okay, looking at the warning that we had run down through, which is fine. The only thing we did not, the budget we've set, the only thing we did not discuss is Article 3. And Article 3 is Louis's article, the 200,000. The one I originally, I think, wrote up was in case we wanted just to say, can we have 200,000? If so, it would go on top of our budget. Or, because there's several ways you can do this. You can go out to bond, you can go out to loan, you can get funds perhaps to help offset the cost. That is what Louis did for all those contingencies. I, mine was just cut and dry. So Louis, do you have any, this is the normal warning for those?
So what I did was I went back and looked at, just for consistency, I looked at to see what the language we used for the bond that we went for, for the safety upgrades. So if you recall, a few years ago, we did a bond for 235,000 for glass replacement and security camera replacements for Rutland Town School. So this, this language sets an amount, but it also leaves it open. If we get any state grants, then we can go out for bond for less money. So the cost of this improvement is not included in the budget of the tax rate calculation because we would be going out to bond. We wouldn't be looking at paying this probably until FY '24 and that's when our bond payments would start.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, do you, so you kind of fixed those boo-boos I had on this one?
So I could fix the Article 1, it looks like the amount, it was written out incorrectly. But what were the other changes, if you can just let me know?
It says on Article 2, school director term of, it should be two years.
Okay.
And then B is corrected, three years.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, I can refine this more.
Thank you. And that would allow us to sign it and I can bring it to town hall tomorrow. Louis, we, I know on the agenda we had down to for contracts. Where the heck is it? Oh, the staffing recommended, contract recommendations. I know we, it appeared, I did not know it was going to be on, it was for the assistant principal-principal. Tonight's not a really good night for us to set that, but you have that contingency already in the budget, correct?
There is, yes.
Okay. So tonight, when we talk about that, we don't have the time to go into that because just for the people on screen or calling in, we could be, oh, I had him call me and I don't have my phone.
Who is it? Bill?
Bill, sweet, if you want to let him know.
I don't have his number, I don't think.
I can get his number.
Bill, sweet.
Will you need me to call?
Yeah, we need him to call Tina or you. He was gonna give me a call when it was time for us to go to pre-town.
Okay, I'll give him a call right now. Since he's a parent, I have all their numbers.
Oh, thank you. I left it in the car. Yes, so let me get back on schedule here. Where am I? Okay, going on to consent agenda, director's orders. I need a motion to approve the warrants that came out in the emails we received.
Make a motion?
Are there any discussions on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that'll pass unanimously. Approval of the minutes of December 13. Tina?
I, I just, I want to thank Shawna for taking all these minutes. It's not an easy job. It's very lengthy. It's over 15 pages long. But I just wanted to, and I know it's also hard because she's not here. And so a lot of what she's doing is by listening. So under number three with teacher, staff, community comments, Emily Quigley also spoke, but it was mostly Margaret Dodd, Margaret Prozo that was reading her letter. So it was the two of them that really led that discussion. And then when we went over the math overview, right at the beginning, I had asked Al to postpone the S-BAC talk of it for the reason that we still haven't received the S-BAC results for last year and that looking at old data wasn't going to be as helpful as looking at how the pandemic affected the S-BACs and also, you know, looking at multiple years of data. So some of the discussion that was mentioned in four, I think she took from the PowerPoint slides that he had provided, but we didn't actually fully discuss as far as my memory serves me correctly. And, and that was basically it, that I saw is very right.
Okay. Well, if you didn't catch it, then I'm sure we didn't. Does anybody have any changes, additions, deletions to the minutes?
Happy New Year, Chris.
Sorry to be late.
That's okay. We understand. Okay, if I Okay, if I could have a motion to approve the minutes of December 13?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, December 13.
Thank you, Billy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, passes unanimously. Superintendent's report, you want me to give you a couple minutes?
That's okay. I know that it has been a relatively short time since we met, so we had asked Lynette if it was okay if we just gave an oral report. Really, a couple of the updates that I want to just highlight, part of the fact that we, you know, had the first meeting of the Fortuna graduates, part of the work with the Tell for Kids, Strategic Plan. That our next meeting is scheduled for next week, January 18. It is virtual. We do invite all of Rattletown residents. You know, even if you weren't involved in the first round, if you'd like to be involved in the second, just reach out to myself or to Sarah or to Kristi McGinnis, the admin assistant, and we can get you on the list. You know, it is a good process. I think those who were involved in the first meeting can share that, you know, that we are working towards really developing this unified, common vision of really what a student who meticulously through a system, whether it be one year, four years, eight years, whether they be, but what we're really aspiring to and what some of these key competencies are that we're looking at. And once we develop that vision of what our graduate looks like, that we kind of begin the real work, which is the Strategic Plan, developing a five-year plan, kind of, well, how are we going to do this? And I do think that's some transformational work that, you know, we'll be doing across all of our communities. And all input is sought, except I think it does impact every grade level from pre-K all the way to their high school. I think it will have a lot of impact. But I know the first meeting, I had an opportunity to interact with community members and individuals I normally don't, and it was great just to hear their thoughts and their input. And I know that it has been a trying couple of years, but I think one of the nice things about this meeting is we don't talk about COVID. We don't talk about some of these other issues that we really focus on, really what's most important, that's education and our students. And I think that's, I think what I value most about this. It really gives us kind of that beacon that, you know, we're moving forward. We're still seeing where we need to be headed as opposed to kind of get stuck in the present. Speaking of getting stuck in the present, so, you know, with COVID, I know that we've all heard, you know, the memo that was sent out last Friday that was leaked to the press, just in terms of about the age shift. I know that a lot of parents are asking, well, what's happening? What's going to happen? As of this point, we still don't have a lot of information, you know, from the state. I know that this is something that had been hinted at for a while by the state, is talking about the age shift from a pandemic to more of an endemic approach at our schools. And I know that the key shift will be right around the test to stay. And I know that test to stay has been very important, very crucial amongst our schools in allowing students to have, I guess, more of a least, less disruptive learning environment. It's allowed, you know, they say kids are back at school, families to, you know, get back to work, do a lot of things. But it has taken its toll to a certain extent. I know that, you know, Sarah and Eric and Lisa Lounas and Pam and Cherry and a lot of people, you know, front office and staff have really done a lot to with test to stay. But as we've seen in the past week, week and a half, numbers are starting to pile up a little bit. And I think that's where, you know, looking at is as we, you know, shift from a school-based to more of a home-based, what does that look like? And I think that's something which we are waiting for guidance and waiting for referees to see what that is. But I know, I think the indications are that, you know, schools become more of a distribution site, that we will have test kits, whether it be an antigen kit, a PCR kit, that will provide, you know, availability. But we'll also be asking fam, you know, providing families information in terms of if you are identified as close contact or, you know, positive, here's what you should be doing. And then really is, you know, the owners will be back on the families to do, you know, what the right thing, and that is to follow those procedures. I've said this in our last meeting, and I said this before, and I'll say this tomorrow night as well, there are concerns. You know, I was talking with, you know, members of the press today, and there obviously are always our concerns about, one, about test kit availability. This all hinges upon if, you know, if these test kits are available, if we can't provide these resources for our families so they can do the right things. But also in terms of, I think there's some anxiety amongst just community members, staff members, everyone's about the, whether or not everyone will actually follow through. And I think it's, you know, and that's just a, you know, and that's not to point fingers or just sit there and say, yes, sir. I think that's just a reality of the situation. We've seen this all along where, you know, there is a sense of policing to a certain extent, where people will call Sarah, they'll call Eric, they'll call myself, and let you know, like, early on, this person, you know, they went apple picking. They, you know, they violated the quarantine, they went across the state line. There's always so much we can do. And I think that is a concern for administrators is that we're back to the point where with test to stay in-house, you know, we had control over that, and it was taxing. But as we shift to an out-of, you know, out-of-house perspective of this, you know, we are not and we cannot police this. And so we really are going to, so when a staff member, when a faculty member, when a student shows up for school, we're not going to take a cynical approach. We're going to take an approach that families have done, all they need to do to ensure that, you know, their kids are, you know, safe and, you know, they're not compromising the safety and health of anyone. So I think that's the mind shift that we have to have as we move forward with this. But we do anticipate problems and issues as with anything, so we'll work through those kinks. But I guess I just want to thank Sarah, Eric, you know, like I said, you know, Lisa, Pam, Cherry, the whole staff at Rattletown. It's exciting because it's, it's, it's been a tough week and a half, but still, they managed, you walk in that school, and kids are having a great time, they're learning, they're smiling. I think it's just all credit to them. It's just, it's kind of, you know, kids don't always see the behind-the-scenes scramble, but, you know, like I said, I just want to, you know, say thank you to them, so. The other shift that, you know, was, wasn't public was just about the contact tracing, shifting from 10 days, I'm sorry, the quarantine shifting from 10 days to five days as well as what was identified as a close contact. And I know there was some confusion, you know, but I think that's all been clarified in terms of what fully vaccinated, you know, currently means. And I think, you know, as a parent who, you know, who has an 11-year-old, and we initially heard, like, so she just, you know, had her second shot in mid-December, so now she's not fully vaccinated, it's like, no, no. So there, I think it was just early on, just kind of quickly went through, but I think people have a better understanding of what it is. So it just, yeah, so we'll have more information as it comes through. And I just ask that, you know, so families continue to, you know, be patient and just work through it. But if they have questions, please reach out to myself or bill administrators, and we'll do our best to answer those questions, so. And outside of that, it's just real parent-town meeting and budgets, and getting things ready to go, so. And we're still waiting on Governor Scott to sign up a piece of legislature that will kind of allow us to maybe move forward a little bit, so.
Okay, all right. Any questions for Chris? Okay, thank you. Principal's report, Sarah.
Hi, everyone. I didn't have a written report because we just had a couple weeks of school since our last board meeting, so I just had a couple of things that I wanted to update everybody on. Thank you, Chris, for your kind words in regards to contact tracing and all of this COVID. It has been, I think, almost a harder year this year than what we expected, than what was last year. We've had six cases over the weekend, so six positive cases over the weekend, so I did need to move some classes remote for a day. There's a lot of work that goes into contact tracing from interviewing the positive person, you know, who they were around, what classes they were in, if they were a bus driver, if they played sports, if they had a game, special education specials, interventionist, Vermont Department of Health. We then need to go over vaccinated, unvaccinated. Did they have both vaccines? Are they fully vaccinated? We need to get line lists ready for Vermont Department of Health. We need to do all calls, we need to do letters, we need to inform faculty and staff, custodians, bus drivers, of course, the superintendent. And it's really 24/7. I mean, weekends are just filled with it. My husband was counting every hour on the hour. But we have an amazing team. We want our kids in the building. We just, you know, there is light at the end of the tunnel. Our kids are happy, our teachers. Today was a tough day. We had a lot of teachers and staff out, and so many teachers, everybody just stepped up, covered a class, helped with lunch duties, helped with indoor recess. I just, I cannot thank my team enough. They're just amazing, they're amazing. So to see those kids on Monday morning, it's worth it on those weekends and knowing that it won't be like this forever. So test to stay, just, I posted a few pictures on Facebook so people know. You know, that's a lot of work, too. We've got to get maintenance in there sometimes over the weekend to get things set up. The nurses, the tests ready, Chris was dropping off more tests for us. Lisa's passing stuff to us. I mean, it really is all hands on deck. It's a lot of work, really early mornings, but again, we get our smiling faces of kids in the building, so it is worth it. Aside from COVID, we're doing a lot of fun stuff in the building. The ice rink is ready, the gym floor. There was a lot of deep cleaning that happened over December break. Even just the day after break, when I went into the building, it just smelled, it smelled so fresh and clean. All the carpets got done, floors got buffed and shined. And my favorite part, I'm sure Jeff will know this, is the shiny gym floor. I get so excited about it, so it just, it looks great. So those things got done, the ice rink is ready. We're hopefully getting some more snow to get these kids and the temperatures go up a little bit to get outside on not only the rink, but snowshoeing and our cross-country skiing. ESBC interims have started December, and those are moving forward. Tapestry is now operating four days per week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Unfortunately, due to some positive cases, we had to put tapestry on hold this week, but we hope to have that picked back up on Friday, fingers crossed. And I think that's it for now. So again, I just want to thank teachers and staff and parents and all of our kids for just being resilient and working together. Everybody's been great and very supportive. And Eric actually is on the phone with Betcha because we don't have a bus driver for R2 tomorrow, so I apologize. He's dealing with that right now.
Okay. Anybody have a question?
That's what we do.
I had a question, Sarah. The last meeting, we spoke a little bit about the extra meals at lunch and that in the new year, we are going to try to stop doing the extra meals and encourage them to visit the salad bar again. Has that been going okay? How have the kids taken?
Yes, that has been going okay. We have, just like everywhere, as you know, we've been looking for a custodian for four months. There is an applicant that hopefully will be approved this evening in your packet. And they've struggled to staff the kitchen. They've struggled to get what's on the menu. You know, they've struggled to get the produce in. So sometimes what's shipped is either spoiled or they send the wrong item or they just don't have it. So that's been a struggle for the kitchen staff. I have to give a shout out to Officer Angie, our SRO. She's been helping serve meals with a number of us in the kitchen because we haven't had enough staff there. So yes, it's been going well, but again, they struggle, just like everybody, getting some of the food in that's listed on the menu. So there has been some changes, but the kids have been great. We reminded them in TA, in morning meeting, and multiple times during lunch that, you know, go up and get some more fruits and veggies. And I've seen it firsthand, because like, oh, just get some more salad. So I think that was a great move.
Good. Any other questions for Sarah?
I got a question. The ice rink, when that was fired up, there was a lot of volunteers. Are there still a good group of volunteers that help out with that? And is there anybody around on the weekends to monitor?
Yeah, I actually, I talked to a PTO member about that for to do a fundraiser because I thought they were asking me, you know, they haven't had, they had, other than the fudge fundraiser, they haven't had a lot of participation or fundraising ideas. So I had mentioned doing like a hot cocoa and ice skating outside to get some more community events once the ice skating rink is up and running. There wasn't really many volunteers to, I know Mike Rowe, Kelly, the Rattletown Fire Department, they were all there to fill the ice. But we have the skates, we have milk crates, and it's just, it's, a lot of it was just to get it up and running, I guess, if I'm answering your question, Jeff.
Okay.
How does it work, though? If we have the skates, how do people access those? Do they only access it during school hours right now?
Yeah, and so I talked to the PTO about something that I could work with them to get, you know, like a skating night started. I just haven't heard from them. That was just in December, though, so a few weeks ago.
Okay, we'll have to work on that a little bit. Yeah, it's hard. I mean, everybody, of course, knows about Proctor. Proctor has a family, husband and wife, that have always done that. And they have a lot of community that come in and use that area. Yeah, we kind of have to try to find that in our own community to see if we can get someone really interested in the skating. And, yeah, it would be really the liability for the skates. Can't get to them if we don't have anybody that's reliable, whatever. Okay, tell Eric, I'm sorry we couldn't talk to him, and good luck on getting a bus driver. Okay, moving on. On, you've got contract recommendations. We're going to hold off on the professional staff for tonight. Support staff, we have a recommendation. And very, a lot of people that are very urgently hoping that we will go ahead and hire. We have down Adam Lanfair for a custodian. Do I have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to hire Adam Lanfair as a custodian.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, Sarah, bring him in.
Thank you so much.
That's unanimous. Okay, Chair's report. I don't have much aside from the confusion about pre-town and town meeting. I know in our minutes, it had stated that we were going to be in the library and then go to the gymnasium tonight. None of us caught it at the last meeting. Of course, Rattletown voted months ago that our meeting, our meetings from then on would be held at the Gerk Sue office so that we could have it both virtual and in-person. The problem is if we hold it at the school, no matter what meeting it is, we are liable or we're relying on our custodians to be able to clean the building before the students come in the next morning. And we've had, as you know, custodial problems getting people in there. So there are no meetings to be held in the gymnasium. More than likely, the next, or in the cafeteria, more than likely, a town meeting will also be held virtual and in-person at different places unless something drastically changes between now and February 28. Because we, you know, we just, the board and, of course, faculty, staff, and no one, we don't want to contaminate and bring a bunch of people into the envir, school environment. I'm trying to keep it as pristine as we can. So hopefully, things will straighten out sooner or later. So anyways, town meeting will be February 28. We will again go second. I believe the select board is first at 7:00. And then we'll be on after them. And it shouldn't be quite as much of a zoo as tonight because we don't have a regular meeting on the same night. Vacancies, you all got a list of the vacancies in? Oh, thank you. One second, please. Is there, do you have Matt Geddes' email by chance?
Are you asking me?
No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at Louis. He runs our meetings, he's our...
Moderator?
Yes. Does anyone have it?
I have this contact information because he's a parent. If you need me to do anything.
Well, that's awesome, but you don't have the warning. I've got to get him the warning for tonight.
Well, we could take a picture of it, send it to Sarah, and she could send it.
She could email me his...
Or, yeah.
Or I could review, or anybody his email address.
To Louis.
Email the warning to Sarah, too.
Oh, yeah.
Louis is going to email you the warning. Could you email that to Matt Geddes for me?
Sure, and I'll, Louis, I'll send you his email.
Okay. It just dawned on me that he didn't have it. Okay, next we have oh, yeah, I'll get that later. Next we have policies. These are, two of them are second reads and just up for approval. And then we have three that are on for first reads. What time is it?
Yes, it's 5:40. And I did get a text from Bill. He said he'll let us know when we're ready.
Okay. Okay, transportation policy F6. And the weapons and firearms policy F12 are second reads, and I need a motion to approve those two tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve both of the second read policies.
Thank you. Are there any discussion on transportation, weapons, or firearms? Hearing none, all in approval?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. You guys are making it too easy. Okay, we have first reads. The G2 is the use of copyrighted work. That is a first read from the Policy Committee. And there's no action to be taken on it tonight, but if you would review, unless you have already reviewed them and have questions, or you want something changed on it. We could do that now, otherwise it'll come back to us at the next meeting. Okay, seeing nothing. We'll go on to H1, parental involvement. That's also a first read. Does anybody have any additions or changes to that policy that they are interested in?
I, just the formatting, I think the one should be down in line with the two, three, four, five. Think it looks neater?
We noted, found that out through the last one, so.
So noted, it'll be changed. It's one in every group, Chris, you know?
It's when you shift from a Google Doc to a Word Doc. So, but, but that's why they're the first reads. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. And the next one is D4, volunteers and work-study students. That is also a first read. It's for board community, uh, community reading. That'll come back to us on our next meeting. Okay.
I had a question about that one.
Okay.
For all volunteers and work-study students, just, they're going to be kind of approved by you, Chris, just like every employee, right? So every employee gets approved by you? Is that true?
In, in a sense, yes.
In a sense.
At all, I mean, so when Sarah or Eric, you know, looks to, you know, volunteer, it eventually would go to me and say, yes, I approve, and then goes to Debbie Denbrack, so.
So I didn't know if it was burdensome to do that with, for every work-study student and every volunteer. I, I was just wondering if maybe if it would make more sense to say approved by the superintendent or his, his, her, designate me, or something like that. Just to give it a little bit more flexibility.
We can change that. I mean, to be honest, a lot of these, it'll be, you know, Sarah will say, we have this volunteer, okay, and then it really is just, it's more just, it's run across with us, but I, I have no problem with that worry as well, because if I'm not
If you're not there.
We have had that problem in the past, so that might clarify, like, Louis or Lisa Madison or someone else, like, you know, could.
Could be the final, yeah. Just to make it more easy, I think, instead of harder.
Do our policy representatives have any problems with that?
No.
Can I just ask for clarifying, so that you would say that?
At the end where it says who have been screened and approved by the superintendent or his, her, designate me may have extended unsupervised contact with students.
Okay, old business is our pre-town meeting. Town meeting again is on February 28th. And we'll plan on our portion at least being here for now, unless COVID should mysteriously disappear enough. Upcoming meetings, we need, and future agenda items, we need to discuss the 14th. I don't want anybody to get in trouble if we have a meeting on Valentine's Day. My dog doesn't care, so. Some people really do. And some people should. Don't know why I'm looking at you, Chris.
There are other married people in this room.
I know, but I think last year you got yourself in trouble.
Ah, I mean.
Well, kinda.
My wife is numb to it now, so.
So do we have a problem? Do we want to switch it?
Fine.
There's, it's not ideal to switch it, I don't think. There's only other one other choice that month, right?
Yep.
And that's already the night before, or no, it is town meeting night.
No, not the 14th.
No, the 28th is their only other choice to switch it to.
Right, right. And we're going to be meeting that night anyways. If we have something, I can pull a meeting regularly, whatever. Or if we're going to meet on the 28th, we can cancel the 14th and plan it for the 28th.
So were you looking at other Mondays, Lynette?
Not necessarily.
I mean, the, the, next season, the 15th is, there's not an issue or problem. I, I didn't know if you were.
Do we, yeah, I don't know how much we have normally. Don't know how much we have to do on the 14th. Do we need a meeting, regular meeting?
Well, it would be probably.
It's, it's nice to have in case there is a last minute, I mean, it can be a very short meeting, but I think it'd probably yeah, I think Louis would probably agree as well that having that just there as a buffer prior to the 28th might be.
Has anybody got a problem with moving it from the 14th to the 15th?
I do not.
No? Russ, you have any problem?
I do not.
Awesome.
Sarah or Eric?
Sarah, you're okay with that, if we switch from the 14th to the 15th?
That works for me.
Okay.
Yep.
And Eric, I think he's still on the phone, so. Okay, I need a motion to change the next regular meeting from February 14th to February 15th.
Make a motion to move the meeting from the 14th to the 15th.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous.
Lynette, that's still going to be at six o'clock, correct?
Correct. And it will be here as normal.
And it's not during Feb break, like it says on here. Feb break is the next week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That goes 15 cents off your pay. Okay, we are going to, if we can, where's Greg?
Not sure.
I, I was going to say it'd probably be more convenient to go ahead and attach ourselves to pre-town.
So do we want to adjourn from this and then?
Yep. And then we'll switch over.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, it is 7:03. 7:03, we're going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting. If I could have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and we will be going and connecting with the town meeting, pre-town meeting. You all have, I believe, the link. And we will be linking up remotely here also.
So this year, it's the select board's turn to go first. So if you are joining for the school portion, we will be getting to that later, and Nikki, then you can stay on this Zoom for that portion of the meeting. Once we have completed the select board's portion of the informational meeting, we will place the town meeting in recess while the select board needs to address some housekeeping business in open meeting. That will happen in the Zoom. My understanding is if select board determines they need more than a few minutes, they will put that off to a special meeting. But presumably, that will only take a few minutes, and then we will be transitioning straight into the school board's presentation. Board will be joining us later in the session. So for the moment, we will proceed with the town warning as currently drafted. It is a work in progress, as you will see. But I will go ahead and read the first portion of that warning, that will get into the various articles. So the warning reads, "The legal voters of the town of Rutland, Vermont are hereby warned and notified to meet remotely via Zoom conference on Monday, February 28, 2022 at 7:00 PM to discuss Articles 1 through 23. At the close of business, the meeting shall recess to 7:00 AM Tuesday, March 1, 2022 at the Town Hall and Center of Rutland for voters living on the west side of Route 7 in that elementary school and post road for voters on the east side of Route 7 to vote by Australian ballot on Articles 1 through 23 inclusive. Polls will close at 7:00 PM on March 1, 2022." So Article 1 is, "Shall the voters authorize the select board to approve $1,071,127 for use toward the operation of the general fund budget to be offset by anticipated income and local option tax receipts in the state of Vermont, the remainder of which, if any, to be raised by taxes." So with that, we'll proceed to discussion of the general fund budget and I will turn it over. I will turn it over to Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you all for attending via Zoom. Let me start also by thanking my fellow select board members. John Paul Fagnant, who is center screen here. Joe DiNardo, Sharon Russell, and Don Chaffee, who's sitting here in the room with me. It's been an interesting and challenging year. And you have all done remarkably well, and we've kept the town going, so thanks to all of you. Remembering that this is an informational meeting, and if there are corrections or additions or deletions, they can be suggested by the select board or those of you in attendance. And the final warning may look different, and we think will look different because we've already spotted a couple of things that need to be changed, so we'll go through those. The first item is the general fund budget. As you know, it's primarily funded with the 1% sales, sales and use and rooms and meals tax that we have in town. If you, are we ready to put the budget up on the screen? Bill Sweet, our Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, is going to put our general budget up, and the first few rows are showing what we anticipate for income coming in. First and foremost, you will see is the anticipated 1.1 million for the local option tax. So total anticipated income is $1,385,600, and you can see that figure there. Now, we will, as we set the tax rate, which happens at the close of this fiscal year, we will be looking at these numbers, seeing how close we have come. But we'll be using closer to the actual numbers to actually set the tax rate, so this is a target. It's not necessarily exactly where it's going to be, but that's why we set a tax rate, and we have a separate meeting for that. Okay, now we're going to go through the expenses. Probably the overall biggest increase here is because of the select board's decision to increase our, what we pay our employees by 5.9% cost of living increase. This mirrors what the federal government is doing for social security benefits. And as you know, we have had some inflation and quite a number of, you know, you, you've seen it in the grocery store, you've seen it when your oil bill comes. Prices are going up. So overall, you will see in all of our budgets, a 5.9% cost of living increase for the wages that we pay our employees. At the bottom of the first page, we do show the lister, select board, town treasurer, that reflects the 5.9% increase. Thank you to Howard Burgess, Marsha Chaffee, and Dean Davis for serving as our listers. And next, at the very bottom of the page and at the top of the page, we are into the town clerk, town treasurer, and assistant town clerk and town treasurer. And again, a big thanks to Carrie Clark and Susan McGee, our office holders there, also reflecting the 5.9% increase. Next is Administrative Assistant to the Select Board, Bill Sweet. Thank you to him for putting all of this together and running tonight's meeting. If you look down the next few items, Board of Civil Authority, Ballot Clerks, Supplemental Office Help. Those numbers are somewhat increased because we have three elections this year. We have town meeting election. We have a primary in August, and we have the general elections in November, so it's going to take more BCA members, more ballot clerks, and more help in the town clerk's office to get ready for those elections. About a third of the way down, you will see some changes in the line for First Constable. The salary's gone down, but lines for equipment, supplies, and vehicle have gone up, so there's a net zero increase there. We have a new First Constable. Yeah, we will be voting on First Constable as well. But we need to be prepared to provide the equipment necessary to pay for that position. Mike DeLaHante is presently serving. He was appointed by the select board. And you will be voting on the First Constable position, although it's not shown on the warning. We've got to add that. Second Constable is John Paul Fagnant. His salary line remains the same, slight increase for equipment. And then we have some of the general costs to run the office here in Town Hall. And there's no noticeable increases in those. Then the last quarter of the page, if you look, there's transfer station costs, our transfer station attendance this year. Larry Delvinary and Bill Bauer have been doing an outstanding job, and we're very grateful for their work, especially on these very cold days. You will see salary increase there to reflect the 5.9%. The cost of getting rid of hazardous waste have gone up, so that increase is $3,000 over last year's budgeted amount, so be aware of that. It's a total of $9,000 now. And waste removal is costing, so that is up by, oh, another $3,350, so a couple of increases there. On the next page, we have, at the very top, budgeted for increases in utilities in the town office, slight increases on those. We've decreased the amount for Town Hall maintenance this year. We're concentrating our efforts elsewhere, as you will hear. And we have decreased the amount we're budgeting for attorneys. We have settled one of the lawsuits. We settled the lawsuit concerning the construction issues we had at the Center Rutland Fire Station, so fewer attorney's fees we anticipate this year. Municipal retirement is slightly Uh municipal retirement is slightly up. Uh, about a third of the way down, storm water is up from forty-five thousand to sixty thousand. This was a big increase last year as well, but you'll recall, we combined all of our storm water lines, there was a line and um highway, we combined it with the one in general, so it is a larger overall amount, but it also reflects combined storm water expenditures. Um, so let's see. The most of the other items are remaining relatively the same, we have had a decrease in health insurance, which is a good. Um, and we have a slight increase in new equipment. Going down to planning commission. Um, I want to thank the members of the planning commission who have served very well and that we've, we keep tossing extra chores to them and without flinching, they pick them up and they do a great job. Barbara Nois pulling is our chair. Dana Peterson, Mary Beth Polley, Jerry Sterns, Jim Hall, Sherman Hunter, Howard Burgess, and Andy McCain all deserve our thanks. So that is a very slight increase of um legal fees for the planning commission because they're trying to combine some of our ordinances and give us a unified um effort. A us, an ordinance for us to pull together our various land use regulations. Okay, and at the top of the last page, we'll start with fireworks. When we went to renew our fireworks, um, Fourth of July fireworks contract. We were told this year that the amount would be ten thousand dollars. Um, we had budgeted for seventy-five hundred last year, so this year we're going to cover it by using our townwide celebration money. But for next year, we will need to increase that line. Uh, instead of seventy-five hundred, we need to increase it to ten thousand to cover the additional cost of fireworks. Um, I don't think people wanted to go without fireworks, we certainly didn't on the select board, so that is a proposed increase there. The county tax um has gone down slightly, that figure is seventy-five thousand as opposed to eighty thousand. And then if you go down to where it's the, the Cheney Hill um line items are, we sold Cheney Hill School and all of these costs were related to it. But we do retain the Rutland Town Seniors, um, our thanks to Jim Hall for serving so long and so well as chair, actually chair, vice chair um of that group, and he has turned the reins over to Randy Roberts. So um we do have, they didn't ask for any money last year, there weren't many activities for the seniors because of COVID. But we are hoping to um, the voters will approve three thousand dollars for them for this coming year. So down at the bottom, our total budgeted expenses are one million, seventy-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars plus the twenty-five hundred for the increase in fireworks. That gives us a budgeted increase of slightly over point five four percent, so half a percent. Okay. Back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, I will pause for a moment here and see if there are any questions. Um, because Marsha, I'm gonna ask, I mean, you. Yes, Marsha, go ahead.
Yes, hi, um, good evening, I have four questions, I think they'll be pretty quick. Um, the constable, can you, Mary, can you just review with me about the role of the constables? Like, I know JP um does some like with fire, sometimes he visits and sometimes he does some ticketing, and I just didn't know um the kind of the difference between the constable and the, and the police officers, so if you could just review those roles a little bit.
Yes, I will, it was, um, so you're, you're absolutely right, JP um does also cover fire calls, so um, he refers to the blue lights at the fire calls and that keeps our firefighters safe when there is a fire emergency, so he does traffic duty there. Um, we've heard the townspeople when they have talked about wanting more enforcement of speed control on our, on our local streets and so primarily right now our constables are used for um traffic law enforcement. And we have, um, that's why we were, we were excited to bring our new first constable on board. And JP is also planning on doing speed enforcement, in fact, many times when I call him, he's, he's out in the cruiser, so we can hear the noise in the background. Does that answer that question, Marsha?
Yeah, that's perfect, Mary, thank you. Um, there is recycling was a cut about in half, and I was just curious to know, I know that, you know, hazardous waste was in increase because it costs more, but the recycling was actually decreased, and I was just curious to know about that.
Uh, I'm not sure I have an answer, but is Larry Delvinary on? Uh, why don't I see if I can get that answer for you and uh get back to you?
Thank you, um, and then there's something called a pound keeper. And I, yes, I was curious to know what that was. I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's the pound keeper does um take and impound stray animals, I think it's Paul Williams, right? Yeah, yes, that is, um, that is a long-recognized old Vermont um office, y- you know, interested in it, you could run for it, maybe.
No, thank you, I'm, I'm definitely busy enough as it is, um, as my last question was, I, I noticed an increase in web service and software uh towards the end of that budget, and I was just curious to know what that, what that pertained to.
Um, we've been doing a number of upgrades for our services here um so that we can store our town records, a lot of our, our town business on the cloud. And we have also um upgraded, we, I think we have laptops on some rotating basis, replacement basis. Um, and of course, the, the cost of software goes up, um, so I, those are a few things that come to mind for me. Bill Sweet's really the expert, if you want to take a deeper dive, we can put him on.
No, that answers it, I figured it was software and, and you know, that uh cycle of, of computers, but thank you so much, that's it for right now.
Thank you and thanks for coming.
Okay, thanks, Marsha, next up, we have Teresa Cooley.
Hi there, can you hear me?
I can, hi Teresa.
Okay, hi, good evening, um, uh, Marsha actually asked the question that I wanted to ask, I was curious about the constable role. Um, so if there is any speed speeding on streets and whatnot, should we be calling the constables? Or should we be calling the police? Because I know in the past, we've usually called Ed Dumas, so.
Well, Ed's, Ed's here and so is Ted, um, uh, all of our officers are going to be doing more, have been doing more speed enforcement. You've also seen the little speed cart that indicates when folks are going too fast. Um, that's out in your neighborhoods now, um, so it won't matter, you can call the constables or you can call Chief Dumas um at the town office, so either way, they're all on patrol duty when they are able to be.
Okay, is it just that, uh, is it just the constables just do the, the traffic law enforcement or do they do other duties as well?
Well, I know, um, JP is also sworn in as a special officer, police officer, and he's had, um, actually both constables have. So they have trained for other purposes as well, but they are, I think, primarily aiming at um the blue light patrol at fire um events for JP and speed enforcement for the rest of the time, that would be our focus.
So the blue light patrol for the fire, so if uh the fire emergency, but he's also part of the fire department as well? So would it not be the fire, he's, he's not in, in a fire, fire department role doing that, he's in the constable role, correct?
He's in the constable role, he's got his truck, he's wearing his constables uniform.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more questions on the general fund budget? Don't see any. Hands raised, is anyone on the phone who'd like to chime in, now would be a time. Okay, seeing none. I will move on to the second article. Shall the voters authorize the select board to raise by taxes an amount not to exceed four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars used toward the operation of the police fund budget? And I believe now we have uh Sharon Russell to speak to that budget.
Okay, thank you, um, yeah, I just, uh, as we start, I, I want to say something first before I go through that budget. Um, to the people of Rutland Town, we have four full-time officers, three are level three, which means they are are completely certified. Then we have our school resource officer who we are going to be sending to training to bring her up to level three. We have two constables, one is full-time and is a, and is also level three trained, he um he could jump into any position. We have one at halftime, which we've already discussed, which is John Paul Fagnant. Um, what I need to let folks know is if, if someone is arrested and they're taken into um, we, we don't have a place to take them at this point, but if they're taken to the Rutland uh city police department. This means it takes two of our officers to go there, one to fill out the report and one to guard the prisoner in the, in the cell that's located down there. Um, so when people say to me, well, how come we don't have police officers out twenty-four, seven? Four people can't possibly do that. Even four people with two constables can't do that. Um, you can only stretch them so far and our guys have been, in my opinion, outstanding and trying to do the best they can. So if you look at your, your sheet, um, social security, we, we don't have any control over. Our police chief, Ed Dumas, um, was, was working under C F A C. C F A C was paying, I believe it was sixty, sixty thousand towards him. We decided because so many people wanted more boots on the ground in Rutland Town that we would pull Ed away from C F A C, therefore, we did not get that extra money, that's why you see the increase um on the budget. Um, the deputy chief, the second officer, the first officer, all got an increase of two dollars an hour pay. Um, we don't have a part-time officer, so that's no longer, um, you know, our overtime, we went to seven, seven thousand five hundred, that was an increase because we don't know. Um, I'm sure all of you are aware of the issues we have had down at what was the Holiday Inn is now called the Cortina Inn. Um, our fellas were down there constantly, um, that seems to be a little bit better. Although we got some news today that some of the um uh outfit that they have down there twenty-four, seven is going to be going into the Rutland um motel, not the Rutland motel, the motel that is in Rutland that also has homeless there. Um, our part-time office staff, which is uh Mrs. Galapo, um, was working twenty, I believe twenty-four hours. We've have bumped her up to thirty-five and we're not sure if that's not going to have to go to forty because we have to have somebody be able to answer, we've been informed, I think Chief Dumas was informed that if I'm correct, Ed, and you can correct me, um, the state police are no longer going to be doing that for us. So um, we're going to pick, have to pick up the bulk of that. Um, supplies and uniforms are down, um, training is up because we have another new officer and we have to keep them trained. Um, more, our municipal retirement went up because we have more staff on. So that gives us a budget that will be going up thirty-six point two percent. Um, I have Ed on the, is with us also, so you can ask me the questions, if I don't have the answers. I'm sure that Ed will be more than glad to do so.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on the police portion of the budget and, yes, Marsha?
Yes, of course, it's always me, um.
Well, that's not a bad thing, Marsha.
What? Oh, so that thing, good, um, so I just want to make sure the S R O, Sharon, isn't in this budget because it's in the school budget, correct? Or I don't know if anyone could answer that, I.
Well, wait a minute, you're talking about the school resource officer?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um. She is partially in our budget, so part of it is school, but the training will come out of us.
Right, but her like, uh, probably her salary is not in this, this budget, it's part of the, um, the school budget, I think, right?
Yeah, you know what, I'm going to have to ask Ed that because I'm not sure what that is.
Mar, Marsha, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you, Ed?
Not too bad, so we bill all the school budget for the time that our, this S R O is at the school.
Okay. Okay.
So in the summer months, she, we take over, but there is a, a certain percentage, I think it's a I can't exact, I can't tell you the exact percentage, but there's a large percentage, it comes from the school budget, not from our budget.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, um. And um, so I'm, I have to say I'm extremely happy to hear that we're increasing somebody who's going to answer the phone. I can't express how frustrating it is to call the state police, which I have done on numerous occasions, and how rude they've been to me on the phone. Um, so I'm extremely excited about that, but I'm just curious to know, um, who, how do we contact you if something happens, do we call the town office? And, and if, and if, and if Lynn is working, she'll answer the phone, or how, how does that go? I heard, um, I think Teresa mentioned something about calling you, Ed, and so I'm just trying to figure out how that plays out.
Okay, so what's happened is uh, the state police are still dispatching for us. Uh, they've had some issues with uh their staff in the dis, in the in their P S apps, the places where they take our, our phone calls and hand them out to different departments as they come in. And then they've, so they have a staffing issue there and they've also had an issue with COVID nineteen cases, so right now, they have this thing called the level three, if it goes to a level three, then they're not going to dispatch calls, regular, ordinary complaints that you have, they'll, they'll, they'll send them into our office phone and when Lynn's here, she'll answer the phone and take calls if it's, if it's a non-emergency. Uh, and also you can leave a message and when we're working, we'll come in, we'll check the messages on the phone to make sure to see what's there and what we can do to help you out. If it's an emergency and the state police deem it's an emergency, life threatening or whatever, then they will assign one of us or they'll dispatch a trooper to it like they always have. So you, what you want to do is call the seven, seven, three, nine, one, zero, one, like you always have. And if we're working, they'll assign us, and if not, uh, they'll forge it to our self, our, our phone in the uh office and it's recorded and we'll be able to uh listen to those messages and answer your calls that way, it may take some time, but we'll get to it as soon as we can.
Perfect, and my last question is, um, is it staggered with patrols? Um, just for instance, a couple of weeks ago, there was an accident right on the corner of my road and I called the state police and um, Billy actually showed up at my house because he heard it over the scanner or something. Um, and it was like a five o'clock in the evening on a Saturday and um, the response was there was no officers for Rutland Town available. And um, and so we were waiting, hopefully they were going to And, um, and so we were waiting, hopefully they're gonna dispatch a state trooper, so I'm just wondering if there's some, um, staggering of, of, uh, patrolling, if you will, or, or on, on time, on duty, yeah.
We stagger, or a lot of times we stagger the days off. Uh, I usually work five days a week and sometimes they need me on the weekend, I'll come in if they need me. Did you, there, we can't work twenty-four seven with just one guy, usually one guy on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, so they usually work ten-hour days when they come in and when they leave.
Okay, I could, yeah, I meant staggered like, you know, if somebody's working like a six to, you know, I don't know, six to six or something, and then somebody else is working maybe like, you know, I don't know, six to midnight or something, and that's what I meant by staggered, not necessarily days, but I see what you're saying, um, with that, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next up, John Paul.
Yeah, the only point I wanted to make on the police budget, it looks like a large increase, but when we designed how we were gonna develop the police department, we were subsidized by CFAC's salary money, so this was always the cost of our department, but we were able to soften the blow on taxpayers by having that CFAC position. I just wanted to make that point so people are aware, thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Cooley.
So, um, Ed, question, what Marsha was saying, I think she was trying to ask if somebody's on call. So if, say, something happens at like Saturday night at three, or Saturday morning at three AM, do we call the seven seven three nine one oh one number, do we call nine one one? Is there somebody that was, you, do you, uh, schedule, uh, everybody to take an on-call shift?
So, no, we're not, we don't have any on-call shifts at this point in time. There's not enough of us to, we'd have to work twenty-four seven, there's just not enough bodies to do that. If you have an emergency and you think it deserves nine one one, call nine one one. If you're in doubt, uh, call nine one one. If you wanna just call the state police, you can call them the seven seven three nine one zero one. Uh, the good thing about nine one one, if you call it in, you're in an incident, it will track your location. So we can go there and, and check where you are, it'll come in wherever the phone call is, they'll be able to track your location and the police can get there eventually.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments on the police budget? I don't see any raised hands, anyone that's on the phone wants to chime in, now would be a good time to do that. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I will move on to article three. Which is, shall the voters authorize this select board to raise by taxes at a amount not to exceed one million twelve thousand two hundred and eleven dollars for use toward the operation of the highway fund budget? And I believe Joe Donardo will be speaking on that topic.
Yep, good evening, everyone, um, I'm hoping this is coming through and everything's working properly.
You're good.
Uh, uh, thank you. Um, the highway budget this year was a, a little bit of a challenge, um. We had a draft budget from our former road commissioner Byron Hathaway, who, uh, the board would like to wish all the best in his retirement. And, uh, we worked with that, and in his absence, um, we discussed things with our two highway crew members, uh, Walt Tripp and Jason Bathlon, and they have been a big help with helping us figure out some stuff. Our highway budget, uh, is set up a little differently this year, as we go through it, you'll see we've broken down some of the, uh, lines into a little clearer picture of, um, salaries mostly and, and some of the other things. At the top of the budget is the anticipated income from state aid and various state grants. Uh, this is anticipated income, and in the past, we've been very successful at this, so we're hoping this trend will continue in the upcoming year. As we get into the budgeted expenses, you will see there's a winter labor amount and we have nothing there, and that will show up a little further down in the budget. Um, most of the items here are, uh, fairly, uh, um, straightforward, the de-icer assault, uh, winter equipment rentals, we've broken this down into two columns instead of one. One of them is stuff that the town may need to, uh, rent, and then the new line item is the winter contractors, and this is the amount we pay for the hired, uh, contractors to do our winter maintenance during the winter sessions. Um, we get into some of the utilities, everything is pretty much the same. Um, we added a little bit for, uh, winter sidewalk problems. And then we'll get down, you'll see labor. Um, this item now is broken down into three positions, road commissioner, full-time position one, full-time position two. And those, uh, salary amounts all reflect the anticipated five point nine increase for the next fiscal year, and they also show what those, um, were budgeted for other years. So it's a little bit better set up now and, and we'll be able to understand things as we're going forward. Um, moving down through the page, most of the, uh, items on page one are pretty much, um, reminiscent of what they were last year, our, uh, replacement fund for culverts, um, a retreatment, which is paving, and the, most of the other items. Um, one new line that we'll be adding, probably somewhere in this section when we, we have a free number, will be a communication line. And that line will be for the lease of radios that are, have been put into the two-town trucks and the loader, and that amount will be of two thousand dollars. That will be added to this budget, that was a late, uh, arrival, and it was something we discussed at the last meeting, so that will be a new line item, and that'll be two thousand. Um, on page two, we have the breakdown of the, uh, trucks, the one-ton truck, and that is normally for maintenance and upkeep. We do have a new five fifty that was purchased, so there'll be most of the, uh, repairs if they are due to, uh, poor construction of our vehicle will be covered by, uh, the warranty on the vehicle, their, their wear items are still a responsibility of the town. Uh, moving on, we have, uh, just some small tools, everything is pretty much as before. Um, the vehicle fuel has been put into one item now where before it was broken down for individual vehicles, this, this is just a easier way to track where, you know, what the town spends for fuel for the, uh, two trucks and the loader and other small equipment. Um. The, uh, any of the, uh, items related to salaries or, uh, social security and retirement and stuff like that, those are just calculated according to the increase. And then as we move down through there, um, we just have a, a increase in the engineering services, and this was put in to, um, potentially try to finish up the informational portion of the connector road that the town was trying to get constructed. It would be somewhere between the Aldies Road and Farrell Road. Uh, this project was halted a couple of years back, and we did not receive the data from the work that our engineering firm, so there's some hope that we'll be able to have some funds available. Um, there is a pretty good chance that going forward with the reconstruction monies the federal government has been putting out there, that if the municipality or entities have what they call a shovel-ready project for this kind of construction, uh, the town would be in a good position to receive one of these grants, and they may be, uh, grants with no repayment or grants with a, some form of match. So we, we're hoping to have this information available, and if this money does become available, um, we would be able to move forward this at a smaller, uh, cost to the town and increase the, uh, flexibility of that area for the businesses down there. If any of you have ever tried to get out of Ranbury Road on a busy day, you, uh, you understand what we're talking about. Um, and this, you know, brings us to the end of our budget. Um, I don't have an exact number because of the additional amount, um, I don't know if Mary does, uh, because like I say, there's a, an additional amount that was added in there, but we do have a slight increase in the highway budget, um, because of, of, uh, mostly economic factors and the addition of the, uh, new radio line. Thank you.
So that adds two thousand dollars to the budget. So the budgeted expense is one million nine thousand seven hundred eleven dollars, and that is a negative forty-three point seven-two percent increase.
Uh, I think that's what we're seeing on the screen, you subtracted instead of added there, but maybe there's something else that's variance.
Well, it's a minus, it's a minus percentage.
Right, what I added to two thousand, so the one million eleven thousand is the, is the new total.
Right. Oh, right, okay.
That may have been, I, I think that was edited on the screen actually as you're going along, so this may, what we're seeing is current. Okay, so, uh, questions and comments on the highway budget, Teresa?
Yeah, okay. I hear some background, um. Joey, the stormwater, uh, is that absorbed? Because I see that line item doesn't have anything in it, is it, uh, absorbed in the general budget?
Yeah, yes, it is, Teresa, that's, that's the, uh, comment Mary made when she did that. We thought, we did this, uh, either last year or the year before in the budget process to try to make it clear for folks to understand what we're doing. We, it didn't look good when we had the same line items scattered around in a couple of different budgets. And, and just the, one of the notes that I want everybody to be very aware of, um, most of the stormwater stuff that we are doing is not voluntary. This is stuff that we have to do to stay in compliance with the state regulations on stormwater, so there's pretty big engineering cost to design stuff, and then there's the mitigation cost. Uh, so it, it, this is something that we are never going to get rid of, and, and it's, we're, we're just trying to make it easier for folks to understand.
Is there any way to, oh, uh, am I still on?
Go ahead.
Is there any way, is there any loans out there for you to be able to, or low-interest loans to be able to take advantage of? Because you are state mandated to do these things, that they provide some low-income loans for you to be able to take advantage of?
At, at times, there are grants, and there may be some loans. Uh, the grants are competitive grants, and th- so the town applies for everything and anything we can get our hands on, and we're always looking for this. Uh, there is some money out there that one of our engineering firms made us aware of that would help us with, uh, some of the other stuff we have to do in town as far as, uh, businesses that have to manage their stormwater off their property. So there are things out there that we can get funds for to help with some of the business stuff, and I do believe there are some funds out there for the municipal side. Our engineering firm that takes care of our stormwater, they keep us, uh, updated and abreast of anything that comes out, and, and when they're there, we always apply for them, but, but they are competitive grants mostly.
I would imagine, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Marsha, go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm just curious, Joe, um, you have a carryo- carryover balance for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, but then the proposed carryover balance is blank for this, and I was just curious to know if there's a reason why we have no idea what possibly could be carried over?
Exactly, the, the carryover is determined at the end of the fiscal year, and it's the, and that is the only time. Um, highway budgets are by statute allow, are the only budget in a municipal budget program that are allowed to carry funds over from year to year, and a lot of that has to do with the volatility of things like winters and mother nature and stuff, so, um, you won't see anything from some of these until, uh, like, the, the budget that ended in July of twenty twenty-one, um, after the auditors get done with the books and they figure out all the calculations, make sure everything's done properly, they will assess it, what was actually spent and what's available to be carried over. That, that's just a function of the, uh, the way the highway budget works. The current budget we're in, we will not know if there's anything left over until the end of June. And then once the bu- then once the end of June comes, the auditors take over, they check all the books for the town, and, and they figure out what was actually spent and, and what is available to be, uh, either returned to the, uh, uh, capital improvement fund, or in the case of highway, it can go back into the budget.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on the highway budget? I'm not seeing any raised hands, so anybody on the phone? Okay. I'm hearing or seeing any additional, so I will move on to article four. Which is, shall the voters authorize this select board to raise by taxes amount not to exceed two hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars for use toward the operation of the fire fund budget? And I believe we're going to John Paul for a presentation of the fire fund budget.
Thanks, Matt, um, I just wanna highlight, uh, before I go into the budget though, I wanna give a shout-out to our fire chief, Chris Clark, and our two assistant chiefs, Mike Carlson, Larry Delvinary, as well as the men and women of our fire department. Um, I do respond to fire calls and the crew that we have are incredibly dedicated, and to see them out at the calls at all hours of the morning, uh, serving their community like that, it, it's really a privilege. And, and once again, on the fire budget, they've done a masterful job of being able to maintain the costs. If you look at the items now, um, Bill, can you put that budget up, please, thanks? So over on the left is what we refer to as the line item number, and I'm gonna refer to them as the la- for the last three digits, for example, under vehicle fuel, that's line item zero one two, and you can see that that's an increase, something beyond our control, as well as electricity, zero two two, line zero two two. And then down on line zero three three, that salary increase reflects the social security five point nine percent that all town employees are receiving, but that's also reflected in increased social security costs on zero three five. Um, we have to increase our uniforms a little bit, uh, we are starting to get more interest, which is really important, and brings me to a new line item that we've added called daytime wage. And a lot of our people just can't afford to leave their jobs to attend fire activities during the daytime, we're finding it to be a real issue, and we're not alone. I mean, all volunteer fire departments are facing a shortage of personnel, and a lot of these folks are, are young people and they're just raising their families, and so we are starting a line item budget that will allow us to reimburse firefighters who leave their job and don't get paid by their employer, and most don't, but firefighters who leave their job to come fight for the town, that they would get um, a minimum hourly rate wage, and I believe it's approximately twenty dollars an hour. So that's what that new light item is for. But the most important thing I wanna talk to you about tonight, and one that I'm very excited about is, uh, people that have been watching the development of the town infrastructure know that we're kind of behind the eight ball on replacing McKinley Avenue Station. It's been out of compliance for several years, and frankly, we should have started this process last year, but because we were unsure as to how the various aspects of COVID were gonna impact our budget, we held off, and that actually turns out to be a beautiful thing for the town because we have to replace the structure, and at the same time, we have to have a safe facility for our police to operate, for example, when they take somebody into custody. For example, when they take somebody into custody, they've got to have a secure facility that they can go to, process the person. Sometimes they get contaminated if they have to use spray, so there has to be a place for them to get cleaned up. We all knew that that was the requirement of running a police department, um, and I do feel like. It was meant to be for this year because we were able to get a combined facility. And I'll go in, I'll show you what it is, uh, Bill, if you could put up, please, the site plan first. So that's the McKinley Avenue site plan for the new facility. And as you can see, there's places for the trucks, I can't point from my remote location, but. You can, and I have a blow up of this that I can show you later, but you can see how it takes advantage of that site. And if you see the contours, you'll see the, the hill on the east side. There's room for other municipal things in the future if we need it. But this structure, which we're calling the, the public safety building, is really a minimalist building. To serve the needs of the fire department and the police department. Bill, if you could now put up the inside, uh, configuration of the building. So we hired the best architects in the city, uh, and they've done a lot of public safety buildings. And they were awesome in working with us on this project, and we've had input from the five chiefs. The two police chiefs and the three fire chiefs. And if you look at that diagram, you can see the east elevation, the way the fire trucks are facing is the south elevation. If you look at the east elevation, you'll see there are some garages there. One of which includes what in police terms is called a Sally Port. Now that Sally Port is the secure area where you would drive a subject when you've taken them into custody. As you can see, you go through the Sally Port to the different entrances. To the right, you're going into the, uh, processing room and the holding room. And again, those rooms are specified standards that we have to comply with. For example, the holding room has to have a special toilet that doesn't have any, uh, seat on it or anything, it's just a steel toilet. That kind of thing, and we were able to locate the decon room. I referenced earlier, sometimes the officers will get contaminated. Where it has equal access to the firefighters who themselves sometimes need to decontaminate. And again, the specifications for that room require a shower, a washer, dryer, toilet, and a sink. Um, and so that's designed into that room. Now, if you go to the west elevation of the building, Bill, if you could bring that down just a little bit, please. Okay, so the, really, the main public entrance would be right there on the west side where you see vestibule. You would enter in, and if you were going to the fire department, you would go to the right. And if you were going to the police department, you would go to the left. And as you look at the layout of the floor plan, you'll be able to see how we've incorporated just the necessary space. For both agencies to operate. Um, we have, uh, there, there's certain requirements for both the police department and the fire department. One of the, uh, requirements for the police department is that only sworn officers can have access to certain portions of that. Of facility, that'll be handled with separate IDs and locks. So that only people whose ID have been cleared will be allowed access to that, the, um. Without access to the, to that, as you can also see, we've combined the operation of a. Kind of a conference room in the front, that'll be available to the police department if they need that there. There's been incredible cooperation between the two departments in developing this pr- plan. It all started with the need to replace McKinley. And then the economy of scale, we were thrilled that we were able to bring this project in it under five billion dollars. The architects tell us that we should plan for four million one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. But the good news is the board has been planning for this event since we closed out or completed the Center Rutland Station. We knew that in order to, uh, stay in compliance, and, and the importance to Rutland Town residents on the compliance issues. Number one, obviously, first responder safety, but more, uh, just as important as some of us. Who are not in the first responder, are not aware of first responder, but. Our fire service and police service affect our homeowner rates. So insurance companies rate communities on the response time for their fire departments. Which is why Rutland Town has always had the most favorable insurance rates because we have a response time because of the two stations. The other thing is property values, people like to see this type of infrastructure. And then finally, as we started this plan almost twenty years ago. This really is the last piece of infrastructure we need to put in place to maintain all of the values that we all want from Rutland Town. Bill, if you could now go to the elevations. One of the ways we're able to keep the cost down is we had a great experience with the highway garage. And highway garage is what's called a pre-engineered garage. So that this part of it right here, the main part of the structure will be all pre-engineered built. With the PD portion added on, so this is be the, it's a side entrance where you would go in on the east elevation. This is the elevation that would face McKinley Avenue. And the, uh, this would, I'm sorry, this would face McKinley Avenue down here. So the, uh, as you can see, it, it's not our Center Rutland Station, but it doesn't need to be. We don't need another Center Rutland Station, that was kind of the gateway to our town. And folks thought that we ought to make that this nice looking, this will be aesthetically pleasing, but it's not going to be as, it, it, it won't look. Frankly, it won't look as fancy as, as Center Rutland Station. But the, the good news about the price tag is we have almost fifty percent of that to pay down in cash. Because the select board recognizes, and we're all together on this, and, uh, that we need this. We have committed one million two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of ARPA funds towards this project. And we have saved up in our capital improvement fund in anticipation of this event. Eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, so we're really proud to be able to tell you, we're going to have over two million dollars. Put down on this project, which really keeps the bond payment low for our taxpayers. It's like being able to go in and buy a car with fifty percent down, your monthly payment's going to be a lot less. Um, and, and I know, you know, uh, Don Trophy on our board, he has a lot of experience with construction. And I'm just going to ask him to speak, he did a little investigation for us, uh, Don, do you want to speak to the square footage cost?
Well, sure JP, and, and thank you. I wanted to give a little historical perspective, and you, you've covered, uh, you know, pretty well some of the reasons why. This is happening, um, but the primary reason is that as long as I've been in this town. I, I, one of the things that's pleased me is a, just as a homeowner and as a taxpayer in the town, is that this town. Has been proactive in keeping the tax rate low for its citizens. And it's been doing it in very creative ways. Um, just to give a little historical perspective, as you mentioned, the, the real need. Was the need to replace an aging structure, the McKinley Station. Now, this station was built in nineteen sixty-seven, just so, uh, you know, for those of you that, uh, are maybe new to the town. Uh, and, and don't realize how old it is and how it came about. Um, back in nineteen sixty-seven, the town embarked on a decision to go with their own fire department. And they, we had been contracting with the city for fire protection prior to that. Um, this was possible, first of all, because. The Baird family, in the case of the McKinley Station, was generous enough to donate the land. And Fred Gallop was, uh, instrumental in that part of the project. And Bob Solari in Center Rutland was instrumental in that part, and that land was also donated. Well, you've got your land, now you've got to get buildings, and it was quite a project. The fire department volunteers went out with their pickup trucks and gathered just about every single yard sale. And garage sale item that you could think of, holding sales and, and whatever, but. Uh, at the time, there were revenue sharing funds, and when they got these stations built, they had to put equipment in it. And the town wisely decided to use revenue sharing funds to purchase very expensive pieces of equipment, the fire engines. Well, they wear out and they rust, and, and, uh, you got to replace them. So the town again wisely decided that it would use a depreciation fund. And the depreciation fund would replace those engines on a schedule. So that we could maintain the service to the public and not put an excessive burden on the taxpayers. For eight hundred thousand dollars every time a truck needed to be replaced. Uh, and so that's wise planning. Now we get to this situation where this building is fifty-five years old. And people may be wondering, they may have questions as to, well, why do you, why do you need it? Well, first of all, cinder block buildings tend to deteriorate over a period of time, and that's a set period of time. They don't last forever. The, um. So the building is need, it needs replacement in terms of its, its, uh, its deterioration. Also, that building was built when fire trucks were a certain length, that was fifty-five years ago. Equipment has changed considerably, uh, in the modern day, and so you need a little more space. And, and that's what, one of the things that this building, uh, provides. Um, in terms of the, uh, in terms of the funding. People ought to realize, you get your tax bill, I get my tax bill. We should, we should understand that our municipal tax rate is very favorable, and, and one of the reasons it's very favorable. Is because of wise planning and because of the depreciation funds. The, the one point two million of ARPA funds that's been, well, that the board has decided to dedicate to this project. That represents about eleven, or, uh, actually, it represents twelve point two cents on the tax rate. Just in case you want to do some figuring. The eight hundred and fifty-one thousand that's in the capital fund added to that makes the total pretty close to twenty cents on the tax rate. That is being saved from. Immediate taxpayer expense in one given year. By using the ARPA funds, we're reducing the burden on the taxpayers by eleven cents, that's a lot. Especially when you consider that our total municipal budget is about twenty cents. Of, of the total amount of tax dollars required for the town and the school. So, um. We intend to broaden this discussion on PEG TV. Ed Dumas, our, our police chief, and Chris Clark, our fire chief. Uh, will be joining me on PEG TV, and, and we will advertise, and, and we'll, we'll, we'll. We'll put a notification in the circle so that people can, can tune in to that. Uh. Which will further be able to, you know, give the people a, um. A good idea and, and, and a historical perspective of why, why this is needed. And, uh, it's a valuable project, but it's a necessary project. And, um, well, I commend the police department, they're working under some very extreme conditions right now. Uh, and, uh, in terms of the safety for the, for the public and the service to the town, uh, this facility is definitely needed.
So let me just add to that, Don, that we have received approval from both the, uh, town accountants and the attorney. That our approach in terms of finance in this project has been approved, and on a related matter. Um, it's important to note that we've been able to maintain a starting cash of one point five million dollars. Which, um, allows us not to have to borrow money in anticipation of taxes to run our government. From July first until the first time we collect tax payments. And we've, uh, realized over the course of operating with that much opening cash, we don't need it all. We probably only need about a million to avoid having to pay bank interest on our operating costs for the first part of the fiscal year. And the board has voted to ask the taxpayers if we can take five hundred thousand dollars of that money. And apply it towards the Center Rutland Fire Station bond. And so far, we've been able to take excess monies from that project, and now this. To avoid having to have that bond impact our taxes at all. And I expect that if this station goes as others have. We may have some extra money from this building that we would plan, if that were the case, to turn right around and apply towards the bond payments. As most folks know, we were able to bring Center Rutland in significantly under budget. And I got a pretty sharp pencil on this project, and I'm kind of aiming to do that same thing here.
So, John Paul, I'd like to, I'd like to interject there if I may, just for a moment, because I think we've touched on a few different ballot items. So I just want to clarify for folks, since we're on the subject, uh, we started with the fire budget, it makes sense to stick on this. But, um, uh, just want to note that item, article twenty-one on the ballot. Uh, specifically has to do with the fire station, and so I'd like to go ahead and read that now, so it's clear what we're talking about. Uh, so the question there is, shall the town of Rutland replace the McKinley Avenue Fire Station with a public safety building? To house the Rutland Town Fire and Police Departments at a cost not to exceed four million one hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars? And to be funded by Federal American Rescue Plan Act grants of one million two hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. And payment of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars from the town's capital project reserve account. Balance to be financed by a bond in an amount not to exceed two million seventy-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-eight cents. With a payment term not to exceed twenty-five years. Now, uh, we do have some questions and comments coming in already in the chat, and I would just. Uh, note to those who, who are commenting in the chat, if you would like to make your comment or question. Um, in the meeting, please raise your hand, I'll recognize you, otherwise I will go ahead and read those from the chat. And while folks are thinking about that, I think JP, you also touched on, I believe, the item that was left off the ballot. It may be on this draft, it may be added to list about items, is that correct? The Center Rutland, uh, could you explain that again?
So, um, we, our opening cash balance has always been one point five million. And our experience over the last several years is we don't need that much cash to, to open. And let's take the excess cash and apply it towards a current obligation, which, one of which is the Center Rutland Fire Station. So we'll be taking that, putting that money, we're going to ask the voters if we can put that money in a special account and draw it down to make payments on the bond for Center Rutland.
So that will be an additional question on the ballot for votes.
Yes, it will.
So Teresa.
Yeah, Matt, I just wanted to add to that, that, uh, the, the, uh, it, it will be subject to how the bond is structured. When, when we, when we end up finally come up, coming up with a figure for a bonded amount. But obviously, by reducing the, by reducing the bond by that much, you're saving a whole, whole pantload of, of interest money. And there's also the, there's also the, the possibility, depending on how the bond is structured. That if we have excess funds that are dedicated to capital projects, which we have voted in the past to do. And where we have this eight hundred and fifty-one thousand that has been accumulated. If that continues to accumulate over a period of time, there isn't any reason that we can't retire that bond. Retire that bond in, in a shorter time period, and that's also a possibility. And all of these financial decisions are geared towards relieving the burden on the taxpayers. And also, at the same time, completing an infrastructure need that pretty much. Satisfies the major infrastructure needs of the town of Rutland for the long-term future.
Thank you, Don, and thank you also for the historical background, I found it interesting myself, I was wondering about some of those things. Um, I'm gonna go to the chat first, cause we had some comments there earlier, so um, Kristen Hathaway asks. Uh, this seems to be much more than Rutland Town needs, why is this necessary and how much is this going to cost taxpayers? Touched on that a little bit, but John Paul, I guess I'll throw that question back to you.
Yeah, I don't know how, how she's defining need, we know what the need is, and this is the minimum we can do to meet the standards.
We have a. Well, two other comments, I guess I'll stick on Kirsten first, first, um. She states, I didn't say we didn't need something different, I asked why we needed something as described as this project. This seems to be a misuse of ARPA funds that could instead be used to bring new business to this town. There are a lot of empty buildings with no tax revenue coming in, which then gets put on the tax.
Well, my response to that is the board's decision to use the ARPA funds the way they have. Benefits all taxpayers equally, not just one segment of our population.
Okay, we have a question from Shelley A. I think, I'm, I'm not sure, I think this is on the police. Uh, component of the structure, the question is, have you been in the closet all the officers share? So, I mean, that's a reference to a closet, I'm not.
Well, um, actually, it's, it's probably a reference to the current space the PD occupies, which is just, it's impossible.
Maybe that, that question might have been the, but Kirsten response, not sure, but.
I, I think it was a response back to what Kirsten said.
So everyone, it'd just be easier for me anyways, if, if, if you'd be willing to raise your hands and make the comments, the questions, so I don't have to interpret. But I wanna keep as much of this as possible on the public record if we can, so if we can avoid any back and forth in the chat, that would be ideal. Uh, Teresa.
Yeah, I just, uh, it's, it looks like a beautiful, uh. Uh, plan. And just going back to the conversation that we had with the police department, there's full, four full-time officers. And there's not twenty-four hour coverage, so this sounds like it is. I think Kirsten, Kirsten was saying that it seems a little extravagant. I'm thinking it's, it might be a little much for what, what we are providing right now. Is there thought in the future of increasing the police department to warrant such, such a space?
So.
And I answered that.
What we're seeing is more and more, the Vermont State Police are pulling back the services that they're offering to the town. And if you look at the conference room that's contemplated for the PD, for the troop room. You'll see that there are desk space for up to six officers in there. Because unfortunately, what the state is telling us is that they are not gonna be responding to local calls. So yes, Teresa, the long-term plan, I've been working on this now for almost sixteen years. The long-term plan is that Rutland Town would eventually have six officers. Which would allow, six full-time officers, which would allow the staggering to address some of the hours of operation. That you and others have mentioned. Right now, what the PD does with its manpower hours is. It knows when the call volume is the loudest for the town, and that's usually during the day. Um, so that they're concentrating their services on where the call volume is the most right now. And that, in the future, and I don't know, Teresa, if this is gonna be two years from now, three years from now. But we are going to need to add additional officers. We've just been informed that the state police may no longer do our dispatching service for us. Now, we already went through a round of that with them. I, I think we're fortunate that we have partners, law enforcement partners close by. The sheriff's department has a dispatching and as well as the city. But my point is, is that, yeah, there is room, this is supposed to be a building that serves a community for sixty to seventy-five years. So there has to, had to be room for additional desks in the police department.
And it seems, but it seem, it seems like that McKinley Avenue is way out there, so the response time. I'm wondering, cause you're saying because the response time Rutland Town's with the fire department, because we've got the two facilities. Is exceptional, I'm just wondering what the response time is gonna be with the police department. Way out on McKinley Avenue, where, where they are now at Town Hall, they're pretty centrally located. It's too bad you didn't have the, the uh, forthright. The twenty-twenty vision to put them in the Center Rutland facility. It seem, that seems like that would make more sense. What's going on with the downtown, with the downstairs of Town Hall?
I wanted to address that, cause we did, we, we absolutely did have the police department in mind when we built Center Rutland. Our lot wasn't big enough to accommodate. And if we tried to do a standalone for the PD, you're talking at a million and a half for a standalone PD. As small as this one is that we have attached to our building. So that's why we went to, the other benefit to McKinley, it's really only five seconds from Route Seven. And you can, you can get, your response times are pretty even between the two stations to different events. Obviously, depending on whether they're east or west events, but, um, but we are able to get. The east quicker to the east, west quicker to the west, that, that's the benefit of it. But uh, I want, we were thrilled that we were able to get. Both of these facilities under one roof on the McKinley Avenue site. Because if you wanted to look for a different site, we're, we're talking five or ten years down the road. And we'd be, we'd be buried by then, we wouldn't be able to catch up.
What's happening with downtown, downstairs at Town Hall? I know that there were some talk about renovations, so I was wondering what, what's going on there? Could the police department be moved downstairs?
Teresa, I wanted to, I wanted to address, uh, address your previous question i- in, in terms of the. Uh, the strategy and, and, well. Once a decision is made that you're going to go with community policing and, and you're going to go with your own police department. E- everyone should understand this. You can have anything that you want or anything that you need. As long as you can pay for it. And, and un- unfortunately, you know, community policing is expensive. There's no question about it. You could have a full-time police department and you could have twenty-four seven coverage if you wish to pay for it. Other communities in our region have decided to do that. If you take a look at their budgets, you'll see that they're considerably more than ours is. So it's a, it's always a fine balance between what the taxpayers can afford. And, and what you actually, what you need. And I think, you know, our, our department is making some really, really good judgments in how they're using their time. But as JP explained, we're not building this for just one year or two years. We're, we're building this for the long term, and there is no question in my mind. That over a period of time, and I don't know what that is, that the police department will have to be expanded. To what degree? Well, to the degree that the taxpayers wish to support it, and that's as simple as I can get. As far as the downstairs, as far as the downstairs is concerned, uh, we have. Preliminary ideas on that, and we've discussed it, but uh, being that we're taking this project on. We've decided that we would put that on hold. And until we get this completed, and we're hoping that we can do some preliminary planning, some architectural planning and. And come up with some ideas, but there's only so much that a town our size can handle. At, at one time, and we're pretty much at our limit right now.
Thank you, you kind of answered my question right there.
Teresa, Teresa, this is Sharon. Um, the other reason with Town Hall and the, and having the police department as, as we're getting bigger. There, it's a safety issue. If you, if you're a mom that's bringing your child in to pay your taxes or whatever. And the PD is bringing somebody in to, if we expanded downstairs. To um, put him in a holding cell. And they're screaming and yelling profanities and stuff. It's pretty frightening to a child and it's also not very safe. So we had discussed that, and that was part of the reason we said, that's not the appropriate place. To be, to be putting a cell and, and bringing in somebody who might be uh, dangerous. Who might have less than uh, the best of languages. You know, and to answer Kirsten, I don't think there's any price, Kirsten, to put on safety. I think um, our people, our children. Um, deserve the best, the best that we can give, so um, that's where I stand on that issue.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on either the fire budget or the new? Uh, or the, I should say, the renovation proposal for fire and police? Seeing none additional. We'll, we're back up to article five, um, we've already covered some of the big down valid items, so. Take heart, we're moving on. Uh, shall the voters authorize the select board to raise by taxes an amount not to exceed one hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars? For use toward the operation of the recreation fund budget. And uh, this topic, I believe we're going back to Don Joffe.
Thank you, Matt. Um, it's indeed a pleasure for me to present this recreation budget. Recreation has always been near and dear to my heart, and uh. If you have, you have it up already, Bill? The first part of it is the uh, uh, is the anticipated revenue, and that's always, that's always a guessing game. So it was, it's been thirty thousand. We've kept it at thirty thousand, even though it hasn't reached that, but then again, we've been dealing with COVID. Um, hopefully, when we can get back into a regular schedule, that anticipated revenue should increase. Uh, I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor any of the, of, any of the, these standard items that haven't changed. Uh, the, as, as you look down to the budgeted expenses. Um, our recreation director's uh, salary reflects the same five point nine percent. That we have allocated as a cost of living increase. The lifeguards, it was, the decision was made to increase that starting amount. Uh, starting salary of fourteen dollars an hour, which is. Uh, well, within the range that's paid and a couple of dollars above what the state minimums are. And um, well, I wanna take this opportunity, I should have done it at the beginning, but I will now. Uh, to let you know that we're, we're quite fortunate to have a recreation director that. Uh, not only does a fantastic job, because we would expect that, but. Uh, he has a love for this facility and a love for the, the town of Rutland. That goes far beyond the requirements of this position. And you can see that reflected in the budget that he presents. Um, which, uh, which he holds the line on just about everything in there and, and does a fantastic job. But um, okay, so let's go down through it. Uh, the only other items that increased, if you go down to the oh four two. Which is telephone and we've added monitoring. And so that amount went from twelve hundred to thirty-five hundred, and that increase is for. Uh, not only security purposes for monitoring, because we wanna take care of our facility. And we wanna make sure that we know what's going on there and we're in touch. But also for the benefit of the users of the facility, including. The, including the walking and hiking grounds that we have up there. That includes a wifi connection so that you can stay in touch, and obviously that, that also. Is a safety and security feature in case of accidents or whatever. If you go over to the second page. The items are pretty much standard. Um, the miscellaneous item went from four to, to, to three thousand and. And the food item did the same thing, went down, down from, from seven to six. And the reason for that is that Mike uh, carefully planned to be able to use. Money from that budget and transfer it. Uh, to allow for the monitoring increase and the wage increases. Excuse me. So, um, the bottom line to the budget, as you can see, is a one point zero one percent increase. A one percent increase, a fantastic job, uh, especially on a facility of this magnitude. Uh, and, and you know, uh, again, to go with a historical perspective. And I, and uh, while I'm doing the recreation budget, uh, Matt, I thought we'd go, we will go down to the. To the ballot item for the increase of uh, of the depreciation. And that's uh, item nineteen on the ballot, if you wanted to read that now, Matt.
Hey, thanks, Don. Uh, so I, article nineteen, shall the town of Rutland establish a reserve fund pursuant, pursuant to twenty-four BSA twenty-eight oh four. Be maintained and used as a depreciation account, purchase, repair and or maintenance of the recreation equipment. But this depreciation account is funded annually by taxes raised at a point zero one two five. For one hundred dollars of assessed property valuation.
The uh. Again, we're talking about the, the, the very proactive planning that the town of Rutland has done. By putting a rec, a depreciation account in, I, I was proud to have presented that way back when we did the facility. Knowing that someday it would need replacement. Um, but a- as, as things happen, things get more expensive and more expensive. And this facility was actually completed in nineteen eighty. So, you know, it's forty-two years old. Uh, there, there are some leaks in the pool structure someplace. Uh, we've done some analysis, Mike has had people up there, professionals looking. We can't really tell where it's coming from, and there's no evidence of outcroppings of water. So wherever it's leaking, it is seeping into the ground, but. That's, it's something obviously that is of concern, uh, keeping an eye on it. The pool has been resurfaced once at a cost of, I think, a couple hundred thousand. Uh, we don't know if it can be resurfaced again or whether we should resurface it again. Uh, but we are planning uh, on replacement of the facility sometime, probably within the next ten years. Um, and we don't think that that's a facility that the town wants to let um. Deteriorate, uh, and that being the case, again. We need to have the funds available so that we don't get to a situation where we're looking at a, a million and a half or two million dollar. Uh, cost to the, to the town in one given year, so. Uh, Mike has recommended and the board has approved, uh, putting on this ballot and we support it. Uh, a half a cent increase in the depreciation front. From, from three quarters of a cent to a cent and a quarter. And the way that breaks down is. The, the present depreciation for, uh, amount of, of uh, of point oh oh seven. Of point oh oh seven five, which is three quarters of a cent. Generates about sixty-four thousand dollars a year. And we're splitting that or we're allocating the split of that between the pool replacement. And regular building depreciation and or equipment replacement. We presently have about three hundred thousand dollars in that depreciation account right now. What we're looking for is a half a cent increase, which would bring us a hundred and twelve thousand dollars annually. And the plan and the policy of the board will be that a hundred. Of that hundred and twelve thousand dollars annually, we will allocate a hundred thousand to the pool replacement fund. And twelve thousand to building and equipment replacement. Uh, and we certainly hope that the people will approve the increase, a very reasonable increase in the depreciation amount. Um, which is. Well, it's it's it it would be a cent and a quarter as opposed to twenty cents total for the town's uh. The town's tax rate, the total town municipal tax rate is twenty cents.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on the recreation budget or on the appreciation part? I am not seeing any. Hands or. Anything in the chat on that subject? Anyone who's on the phone wishing to chime in on this, now would be the time. Okay, um, for moving on, we do have uh one comment. In the chat, the highway fund, I don't know if this requires a response, but there's comments from. Uh, from Hathaway Farms, so I don't know if that's Byron or somebody else there. But the comment is, have I thought about the highway budget? Has presented, I believe, serious mistake has been made. It looks to me that the highway budget is headed for a very large deficit. Within eight to nine months after July one, the board needs to look at the budget again. Okay, I don't see any other hands on this unless somebody wants to respond. I'm gonna spare the moment to that comment, I will move on to the next item.
Oh, I I the only thing I would say to that is it'd be nice if they'd share whatever doubts they have. So we can they can help us in getting it right if they have some specialized knowledge they want to share. But to just throw out a comment like that does is not really helpful to us.
Okay, um, I'm gonna move on now into. The next section of valid items, which are the nonprofit funding requests. I'm going to read through these pretty quickly and and summarize. Um, I do see Randall Smith is his brother from the library, so certainly we'll pause on that one that I don't know. If any other uh agency representatives are here, but um I'll go through a few at a time, then I'll pause and. Um, open it up if there are any representatives which to speak on those items or if there are any questions or comments. So we are at number six, which is. Uh, five hundred and thirty-five dollars towards supporting the work of the Vermont Center for Independent Living. Item number seven is six hundred and seventy dollars towards bringing the work of the retired senior volunteer service for RSGP. Number eight is eight hundred dollars towards supporting the work of ARC. And number nine is fifteen hundred dollars towards supporting the work of the Southwestern Vermont Council for the elderly citizens of Rutland Town. There any representatives from those organizations or any questions or comments on those topics? Okay, team, team none, we're we're very long. Uh, number ten, three thousand dollars towards supporting the work of the Child Person Advocacy Center. Number eleven, thirty-five hundred dollars for the support of. The partial funding of Marble Valley Regional Transit District for the buses, public transit service to the residents' town. Number twelve, four thousand fifty-four dollars to the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region. Along with area businesses and municipalities, the ultimate goal, growing the economy in our region. Number thirteen. Forty-five hundred dollars for the support of one of the kids museum. And number fourteen, four thousand five hundred and two dollars towards supporting the work of Rutland Mental Health. Do we have any representatives of those agencies, questions or comments? None, I will keep moving. Number fifteen. Uh, six thousand five hundred dollars towards supporting the work of the Rutland Visiting Nurse Association Hospice. Five hundred dollars, Roland Area Hospice and six thousand dollars, Radnor Home Community Health Services. For two twenty-twenty-two, so I think that's. Six thousand for Radnor, five hundred dollars for hospice, for a total of sixty-five hundred is how I interpret that. And I struggle to do that every year, but that's what it says. Number sixteen, fifteen thousand dollars for scholarships to be awarded. To worthy two thousand twenty-two high school graduates of the town of Rutland. Who have resided in the town at least two years and wish to attend institutions of higher learning. Number seventeen, sixteen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars toward the operation. Operating cost of the regional ambulance service. Uh, number eighteen. Uh. Shall the town of Roland continue its participation in the Rutland Free Library Association Inc. And raise by taxes an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. So that would be a good place to pause. Uh, if uh. See Randall is present, would you like to speak on that last item?
Um, thanks for the invitation. Thank you to the board and the citizens who've shown up tonight. I'd also like to mention that both of the Rutland Town Representatives. Uh, to our board, Joe Burdoloni and Ed Gorzalak are with us this evening. Um, I'll keep it really brief. Um, last year, anticipating that communities would have difficulty with uh COVID-related expenses. We brought in a flatline budget. And this year, we are asking for a two percent increase. Um, I've heard discussions of uh salary increases of five point nine percent across the board. Um, I if our budget comes in at a two percent increase, we'll be looking at uh salary increases of less than half than that. Um, so it's an extremely tight budget, as always, happy to take any questions. And certainly anyone is welcome to reach out to me at the library. Uh, we have both uh summarized and full versions of the budget available for the public. Um, and any members of the board, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments uh either for Randall or the those other items that we just covered? Okay, seeing none, we'll keep moving. Item nineteen. Uh, let's see, I believe this is when we cut up covered nineteen, so. Now we're cruising. Item twenty. Okay, this one we have not covered. Uh, shall the town of Rutland rescind its vote? To elect its road commissioner for three-year term of office? And going forward, build the office of road commissioner by appointment by the select board. Would the board like to speak to this item? Anyone?
Um, I would just Joe Donato, and I'd like to speak to that if I could.
Yes, please, Jim, thanks.
Yep, um, this uh ballot item has been under consideration since uh twenty twenty. When uh former road commissioner Byron Hathaway informed us that the term he just left would be his last term. And a plan was devised by him and the board and a structure came up with. To um put this question on the ballot in March of twenty twenty-two. With the anticipation that if it was approved, uh, the town select board would interview and hire. An individual to be the road commissioner and that person would have been working with the. Uh, former road commissioner for approximately one year and get his feet under him and learn uh the uh. Running of the town's highway department and what that entails. Um, with the early retirement of Mr. Hathaway, um, we are still moving forward with this project. And we will be uh hoping that the voters will approve this. And this will allow us to um interview and hopefully uh pick a good candidate. Uh, this is going to be a much tougher transition now and it's uh on a very important um decision that the town voters. Uh, need to decide on come March. Um, this is a um pretty much unified uh approach from the select board. That we think this is in the best interests of the town and we are moving forward with the original plan that was proposed during. Um, a couple of years of discussion with our former road commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. John Paul?
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that because a lot of people say to me, well, what's the difference between an elected road commissioner? And an appointed road commissioner? The statute gives a select board control over the road commissioner. The biggest difference, and Byron was the one who alerted us to this, is that. When the select board appoints a a road foreman or however you want to phrase the position. We can hire from outside of town. If we continue to elect the road commissioner, it can only be filled by a town resident. And have, as we have seen with vacancies in the highway department. There's not a lot of interest in within our town borders. Um, and so it allows us to get a more qualified applicant pool. If the select board appoints, because then the person does not have to be a resident of Rutland Town. I just wanted the people to understand what the difference is.
Thank you. Right there.
And let me let me add to that JP, it it not only gives us the opportunity to hire from a qualified pool. It actually gives us a qualified pool, which we didn't have when we filled this particular position. There was no one that applied for it and, you know, we have to thank our our road crew. Uh, and our present foreman and present acting commissioner for stepping forward. And getting us out of a pretty dire situation, a dire predicament. But we had that advertised, Mary, for how long? Two or three weeks at least and no one applied.
That's a good point, Don, thanks.
Okay, Jim Schultz?
Hello, um, as an elected official to the town, uh, as the town's tax collector for delinquent taxes. I also want to bring forward the point that it it is in being an elected position. It really comes down to who gets the most votes. And that decision may not be um. In line with the fact that the position you're filling is a very important position to everything in the town. And if somebody who is truly not really fully qualified for the job. It may take them a year or two years to get up to speed to be able to do it. If they are even holding the necessary um credentials to be able to do the job. Um, leaving your um road crew in a position where. Things may go lax or whatever and cause issues. I think that changing it to an appointed position instead of an elected position. Is uh very important to keep a smooth transition from one leader to the next of that group. And uh, thank you for the time to put my opinion forward.
Thank you, Jim. Excellent point. Tom run for moderator if you can operate Zoom. Or tell jokes to a muted audience. Uh, I think that's all I see on. That subject. Anyone who's on the phone wants to chime in, now would be the time. Okay, we've covered uh Article twenty-one, which was fire police station. Uh, the next two items are related to each other, so I'll read them both. Article twenty-two, show the town of Rutland, certain seven BSA eight sixty-three A one. Permit licensed cannabis retailers as defined by statute to operate in the town of Rutland. And number twenty-three, show the town of Rutland, statute permit cannabis integrated licensees. As defined by statute to operate in the town of Rutland. Do we have a board member who would like to uh speak on this subject?
I I can speak to that, Matt. Um, so what this article does, it it allows Rutland Town to take advantage of. What we anticipate in the state's going to be additional retail market now that cannabis is legal. I visited some facilities in Massachusetts to see how they were run and operated. And in every instance, they're uh uh clean, they're in nice neighborhoods. They seem to be run on a daily basis without any trouble at all. Some of them are even hard to find. Uh, I I think that would be our experience here, but really frankly, the bottom line is there's going to be a. Opportunity for municipalities to put a tax on this product. And it's anticipated, like if you look at the communities in Massachusetts, some of them are getting as much as seven, eight percent. The municipality itself uh on the sale of this product. And uh, that would really, really help stabilize our tax base and reduce taxes. So that's the primary reason why we're we're not advocating it one way or the other. But we are saying if somebody comes to the town with a good plan. Uh, they ought to be able to do business in our town, just like they're going to be able to do business in the city and of surrounding towns that approve this valid item. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Of your your muted Teresa.
Sorry about that. As um, as there's no uh zoning in Rutland Town. Would the sales be more or less in the mainstream or could they happen in residential neighborhoods?
The places in which inquiry has been made are typically along the commercial corridors because they want the exposure to the traffic.
Yeah, you had mentioned that some of the places in Massachusetts were kind of like off the beaten path. So I'm just wondering if they were in like neighborhoods and if we have to worry about any residential neighborhoods having increased traffic in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, I I think that our nuisance ordinance would address that particular, but no. But no, when I said they were discreet or hard to find, they were in little strip malls that didn't, and they didn't really stand out from the Joanne Fabrics next to them or the, the, you know, the other stores next to them. That, that's what I meant when they were, when I meant you couldn't, you know, sometimes they were even hard to find.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that subject? Not seeing any. So we'll move on to the last couple items. Article twenty-four. This is the offices that are up for election this year. Which are moderator for a term of one year. Grand juror for term of one year. Select board member for term of two years. Select board member for term of three years. Lister for term of three years. Cemetery commissioner for term of three years. School board member for term of two years and school board member for term of three years. Yeah.
Mister Moderator?
Yes, Mary.
Um, thank you. To address item twenty-four, missing from that list is the election of a first constable. The, um, select board appointed an interim first constable. It's necessary to have that um, position elected, so that needs to be added to the ballot.
Two or three years, Mary?
I don't know. Um, is it two years? I'm advised it's two years. I haven't looked it up. Um, also, missing from this list is highway commissioner. If the previously requested ballot item passes and the select board is authorized to appoint a highway commissioner, it will not be necessary, of course, to have an election. If we, uh, the voters decide to keep highway commissioner as an elected position, we have two other elections coming up in twenty twenty-two, one in, um, August for the primaries and one in November for the general election. And the select board will, um, set one of those for the, um, highway commissioner elected position, should that be necessary.
So, Mary, could you clarify again that timeline? So is the is the highway commissioner not, it's, it's appointed now for the current term until when? Where there is no, so.
The, the interim highway commissioner right now is in place until um, either the voters approve the select board appointing a highway commissioner and then we make a determination after town meeting who will be our appointed highway commissioner. Or if the voters say, um, no, we want to continue as an elected position, then we will set the election for highway commissioner in either August at the, um, primary election or November at the general election.
Okay, so the current term that's being filled wasn't expiring as much?
That's correct.
Correct, okay. All right, thank you for interjecting on that subject. Uh, and article twenty-five is transact any other necessary legal and proper business which may come before said meeting. So that concludes all of the valid items. Are there any final comments from the board on any of these? Subjects. Any final, uh, questions or comments from the public? Not seeing any raised hands. So I think what we're going to do now is we are going to recess the town meeting. And Mary, uh, I will then turn it over to you, uh, for the business the board needs to conduct. You'll have to advise me if you are going to proceed with that, with that now, um, approximately how long, uh, folks might take a break? And then we'll be moving into the town school board meeting.
Mister Moderator, it occurs to me that this is, we're into nearly the second hour, uh, nearly completed the second hour of this meeting. And I believe if the select board took up the matter of the, um, changes to the budget and the warning items that we need to look at, um, at our next select board meeting, which is next week, we would still be in time to approve the warning. So I would, um, request that we not proceed with the select board meeting or, or recess these items to our next, that's probably the better. I'd entertain a motion to recess these items to our select board meeting upcoming on Tuesday.
So moved.
Motion is made?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of, um, recessing these items to our regular select board meeting next week, please say aye.
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 Aye. Um, motion carries. We're recessed. Back to you, Mister Moderator.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, board. Uh, since we're doing this remotely, we'll just keep right on rolling. Almost, except I need to open uh, the attachment I just received for the school district warning. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and, uh, read the warning here for the Rutland Town School District. The legal voters of the Rutland Town School District here by notified a warrant to be virtually at seven o'clock on Monday, February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two. Discuss the following matters to wit. Meeting link and dial-in information will be found at your, uh, your CSU and our CSU calendars at their websites. Okay, number one, to hear and act on the reports of the town of Rutland School District. Number two, to hear and discuss the proposed school district budget. All citizens are invited to attend virtually and provide school board comments and ask questions concerning the proposed school budget. And number three, to transact any other business that may legally come before said meeting. At the close of business, the meeting shall recess to seven AM Tuesday, March first, twenty twenty-two at the town hall, center of Rutland. For voters living on the west side of Route Seven. In the elementary school gym on Post Road, for voters living on the east side of Route Seven. Vote by Australian ballot in articles one, two, and three. Polls will open at seven AM and close at seven PM. Uh, articles number one, show the voters of the town of Rutland School District appropriate the sum of nine million twenty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents necessary for the support of its school for the year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two. It is estimated that this proposed budget approval of the zone education spending of seventeen thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars per equalized pupil. This project, uh, projected spending per equalized pupil is two point five one percent higher than spending for the current year. Number two, to elect their school district officials as required by law. A, school director for term of two years, B, school director term of three years. Uh, number three, show general obligation bonds and notes of the Rutland Town School District in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Subject to deduction from the receipt of available state and federal grants and aid, the application of reserves and other financial assistance issued for the purpose of financing school building improvements, namely the construction and installation of an elevator at the Rutland Town Elementary School, an estimated cost of two hundred thousand dollars. The legal voters of the Rutland Town School District have been notified that voter qualification registration apps, deboting, all of it, said special meeting shall be as provided in chapters forty-three, fifty-one, and five, or total seventeen, must be annotated. Uh, which was adopted and approved and every new, uh, board of school directors, January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. And so with that, I will turn this over to Lynette. I assume you're here somewhere. Look at my list.
I'm here.
Okay. Yep, uh, you'll have to speak up a little bit. Go ahead, take it away.
Okay, sorry. Um, yep, we, um, just finished our regular meeting, which, um, we had moved in approved the warning we placed on the ballot for voting on March first. Um, the first order of business for me is, um, to, uh, approval of the agenda. We had a small agenda. Most items have already been taken care of in our regular meeting. Um, the, for my board members, the approval of the warning has already been done. We do not leave in executive session. Um, so approval of the amended agenda.
I make the motion to approve the amended agenda?
Yeah. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, pre-town meeting budget information. So, um, article one, of course, is for the budget itself. Which, as we said, is, uh, just over nine billion dollars. Oh my gosh, can you believe that? Um, we do have a tax rate calculation. Is it Zola?
I told you to probably.
You did? Okay, Matt, I think you have our tax, estimated tax rate calculation was forwarded to you. I'm not sure if you can share it. I know you don't have Bill.
Let's see.
It might have been under the one attached to the.
I see the, uh, there was per, uh, per people cost was mentioned and the amount of increase was mentioned in the articles.
Okay, well, okay, there should have been a, um, something else there, but just for the voters, um, and listeners out there.
Okay, um, so, so Louie just sent me the budget info and, uh, whether I can share this, um, is a good question. If you, you keep talking, I'll work on this.
Okay, um, just to say, um, the breakdown on the increase, majority of the increase over last year is due to tuition. We have the difference between outgoing students and incoming students into high school. There is a sixteen student difference, which in gives us a okay, the tuition is up three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars due to an increase of sixteen new students based on the twenty-two student counts and estimates. So the majority of the increase in this budget is due to student tuition for high school. Okay, the estimated tax, good job, Matt.
Well, you have to, can you tell me, are you seeing right now the, uh, estimated school tax rate right now?
Well, I was maybe.
Okay. How about now?
There it is.
Right, I've got two screens going here and a whole bunch of pop-ups I'm trying to.
That's, that's perfect. The one you've got is perfect. So it shows that for the upcoming school year, for the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, it's nine million twenty-eight dollars. Or, I'm sorry, nine thousand, nine million twenty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars, um, is up the, uh, four point eight four percent. Education spending is up three point four six percent. Um, at just over, well, eight million six hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred forty-three. Equalized pupils, this is the only part of this calculation that isn't, um, firm yet.
They live there, and the yield.
Oh, I'm sorry, and there is a property yield also. But, um, as far as estimates that they've been recommend- recommended to, to advise to take, our pupil, equalized pupils went from five hundred and two up to five hundred and six equalized students. And spending per equalized pupil is now seventeen thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. That's up two point five one percent. Um, that would actually cause the budget itself or the tax to go down. Property yield is not set firm yet. Um, it's going to depend on the legislature, legislation and what they decide to do with that ninety million dollars. Um, that we've been advised to use the twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven figure. Um, it could be as much as fifteen thousand something if more money of the ninety million are put into, back into the expenditure. Um, they haven't come out with even a percentage that they're thinking of using. Um, this is totally up to the legislature and they probably will not decide this until after March elections. This brings the equalized tax rate to one point three two um, dollars, which is a decrease of ten point three two percent. Last year's equalized tax rate was one four eight. This year is one point three two. CLA went from last year one hundred point oh two percent to this year's ninety-six point thirty-eight percent. Uh, this is again, um, figured by the state. The difference is a three point six four percent decrease, which would raise the tax rate. At the very bottom, you'll see the adjusted tax rate. Last year, the adjusted tax rate was one point four eight dollars. This year would be one point three seven. Again, that is a decrease of six point nine four percent, um, from last year. Um, I'm not sure, these figures will, and I apologize for not having a budget out ahead of time for people to review the questions. Um, we just, like I said tonight, finished the, uh, budget up. So, um, I mean, that, that is the main article, of course. The only other one, um, would be, uh, well, article two is just for elections. Article three is, um, the two hundred thousand dollars being asked for for in, um, the installation and purchase of an elevator. Man, I'm not sure if anybody has any questions on these.
Well, you've lost most of the audience, but we do still have Marcia Turner.
We usually do, we usually.
Marcia, go ahead.
Good evening. Hi, Lynn. Um, I, um, I just, I would, I would really, and I've said this before, I would really like to see a breakdown of this budget. The town gives us a really nice breakdown of, um, for each of the, the general budget, the fire, the highway, um, the police and the rec department. Um, and we kind of, kind of can see where that the money is allocated. And I've asked for this a number of years. Uh, we used to have it prior to, uh, the current business manager. We actually had something that was handed out to us. Was very difficult to understand, but, um, at least we had something. So I, I, I would really appreciate it if, if the school guard could really look into doing that. I know that you guys talk about the budget every, every, uh, school board meeting, and I do try to make it, but I'm just thinking of other people that might not be able to make it. You know, giving a figure, and I understand that most of the increase is through the tuition, but it'd be really nice to see that, that breakdown. So, you know, if, um, of, of, uh, staff, uh, like, you know, the, the, um, I'm sorry.
We can, we can put that on our website. If you want a hard copy, um, you can stop by. Huh?
She gets email.
Okay, you can email Louis. and he could just send you a copy to the mail. We have it. It's a, well, it's actually six pages long. But we do have it all spelt out. It's, most people get lost in it. But like you said, you, you're used to looking at it. It's not quite as easy to break down like the other budgets are in the town.
Yeah, that'd be perfect if it's, I think you maybe mentioned in the prior that it was on this, going to be on the website. So it'd be great if it was on the website. And are you talking about the Rutland Town website or are you talking about the GRCSU website, just to be clear?
It would be on the Rutland Town School website.
Perfect, I'll take a peek there and if I can't find it, I will.
Okay, give us, give us a couple days to get it up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll look later, believe me, I got enough on my plate. I'll wait a couple of days, but thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Marsha, anything close from you or? Sarah, go ahead.
Marsha, I just want to ask a clarifying question. Did you want the pie chart? Because Louis has done that for us before. Is that where you were referring to? Just the breakdown of like, this is how much money goes to transportation? This is how much money goes to staffing?
I would also like to see that too. I think it's important. I mean, I'm a teacher, so I can definitely see the value in our education and our school budgets. But I think when, when, as a taxpayer, people, and we, you know, we've had struggles in the past of passing our school budget. I think it's really important for people to realize that aren't maybe work in the school system or not at the school and realize that, you know, we don't have any control, you know, the high school tuition, we have no control over that. And that takes up this percentage of our budget. And this percent of their budget is actually the staffing and the, the wages and the benefits that go to staffing, which is the area you can control, but that unfortunately is at the cost of our students if you cut it, which you're not, I'm just saying. So I think it would be really nice to see both, Sarah, actually. And I think the pie chart is a benefit to the taxpayers so that there, it's clear, it's a visual. They can quickly see actually what's, you know, where the money is allocated for each section.
Marsha, if I could say, I do apologize for that. I know that when we had no COVID and we had our town meetings at the school in the cafeteria, we had handouts of the budgets. So we just, because of COVID, I, I do try, we try to keep as many people out of the school as we can, just to make it easier to keep it clean for the children. That is why I know this board, we made our decision, we meet at the Burke Sue office in the conference room because that way nobody has to go in and clean the school when we leave. So people are welcome to come here virtual or in person. And it just keeps our school and our children's staff, faculty, administration a lot safer. But that's why I think in the last few years, you haven't seen it. I didn't even really think about not having a present for you, but I know we used to hand it out at the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments?
Matt, this is why we, this is why we'd like to go first.
Well, I don't know, there's, there's two sides to that, right?
You got it, every other year.
Got to stay up late, but, perhaps. Until, till the end of February. Okay, well, unless you have anything else, I guess we might be done.
I think we are, Matt. Thank you very much. Thank you to the ones listening out there, the residents. We do really appreciate our, all of our citizens, the staff, administration, faculty, support staff, and of course the students. They have been phenomenal for the last two and a half years. And well, I should say going to be free. And we can just hope and pray for the best. Thank you, Matt.
All right, well, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you to all the staff that are here and a couple of members of the public that stuck with us. You're good citizens.
The worst one ever.
And I think we'll call that a meeting till the end of February.